Zoom. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Protem Blatz.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Wierich.
Here.
Okay, and we have a quorum. We don't have a presentation, but let's do the pledge of allegiance. Randy, will you do the honors?
Yeah, um, how do we do this? We just?
Yeah.
Ready, uh, I'll look for a flag somewhere. Are we gonna stand up or what? All right, I'm up. Um, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flags.
Of the United States of America.
And to the republic. Which is standing. A nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty, justice. Justice for all. Okay, uh, public communications are seven thirty. Did we get any emails this time?
We did not receive any public comments this week.
Okay, they've heard all they want to hear from us, okay. Okay, let's do the consent calendar, uh.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Oh, I jumped over the approval of the agenda. Uh, is there any, any changes in the agenda tonight? Here. Okay, we'll go to, uh, the consent calendar. We have a motion and a second. Uh, no objection, so we're. I don't hear any objection, okay. Gail, you may record that as approved. We then will go to discussion and it's item number two. Uh, Novell. Coronavirus. Uh, James, would you like to handle it?
Yeah, yeah, I'll just give a, a brief overview. This, um, item is on the agenda. We put it on the agenda so that we could talk about any needed responses related to the coronavirus. Every, we've talked about it, uh, in the past at the last meeting, but everything is very quick moving with, uh, with this issue, so we wanted to make sure that we have it on our agenda. Um, we reported last meeting about some of the actions taken and the staff report includes a timeline, um, through early April. Since that time, uh, we put a public health order out last week, um, requiring face coverings, uh, at essential businesses throughout the city. And we also, uh, extended permit, uh, timelines by a hundred and eighty days, um, because a lot of, uh, permits are, are running into time issues because of, uh, uh, not being able to, um, move forward with them during this. So we put that order out last week. It went into effect Friday, um, and so face coverings are required throughout the city. Um, we also continued over the weekend to, um, to, uh, work with the farmer's market to, with the goal of trying to reopen, uh, in the next couple of, you know, next week or two weeks, depending on, uh, we've given them a list of, uh, requests that we've asked for. Uh, so we're, we're continuing to work with them on that. We're also working on, uh, or we've developed a trail, um, process that we've been rolling out where we have, uh, blocked traffic on north signal to prevent big crowds of people, uh, that would violate the social distancing or, I'm sorry, I've been told that we are calling that physical distancing now, so the physical distancing requirements. And we, people may have noticed, uh, if they noticed that there were road closure signs and, uh, our police vehicle was out there and, um, and there were some no parking signs. That was all to try to, to help maintain physical distancing. That seems to be working. Uh, the only complaint we received this week about a trail was actually about a trail out, uh, outside of city limits. We received no complaint about any trails within the city. And so those are the two main things. Um, we've gotten an updated plan from the farmer's market and we're working through some final details, uh, with the goal of trying to get them reopened and, um, and those are the main issues. Uh, the one other item I'll just note is we have received a public, um, health notice to, to close a, uh, a business that the county has deemed as non-essential. The county, uh, has the authority to declare those, um, and, uh, so they have, have sent us an order declaring a business that way. We disagreed, so we had conversations with the county, but ultimately they have the authority and have, have ordered the closure of that business.
Can I ask a question? Is it okay? Uh, about the, uh, the face covers? My understanding is that it's, it's for the city of Ojai, not Miners Oaks?
Correct.
That's correct.
Yes.
That's just adding to the confusion because I had, I got an email complaining about Ace Hardware and that sort of thing, but is we just, uh, you decided that this was merited even though it's not countywide? Is that correct?
Yes, we did. And, uh, it's, you know, we've, we've continued to say this, that Ojai has special circumstances and challenges that, that other parts of the city, uh, of the county don't have. Um, our average age is higher than any other city within the county. That's a concern with the coronavirus. We have a closed environment, uh, you know, with the valley. That's a concern. And, um, we want people to be able to shop locally without having to go outside of the valley to, uh, and possibly bring something back. So we're trying to think of ways to make it really safe for people to do that. But unfortunately, at this time, only the city of Ojai has done this within the county. And this morning at the board of supervisors meeting, uh, Supervisor Parks did ask, um, if the county would consider it, uh, and I think that they have talked about they're doing, they're weighing the pros and cons, but they haven't made a decision yet to implement this countywide.
Yeah, they might just, uh, talk about that tomorrow. Our ten thirty meeting. Um, okay, now, and my other, what was my other question? Oh, are we, are we going to be discussing Ben Franklin and the farmer's market with this item or?
So this item would be the item we, we can discuss those under, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I have, I have a technical question before we move on with the agenda. Uh, on my screen, uh, I have been watching and I thought that Souza had become paralyzed. Then I realized that it's merely a photograph of Susan, uh, that is stuck. And then I noticed that my picture on my screen is also stuck. Is there something that I'm doing wrong at this end? Or is there something at the other end that would allow, uh, the camera to go back and forth to the speakers?
You know, I'm noticing, um, Mayor Johnston, that it appears your, your picture is the one that's getting stuck that I could see, so I'm wondering if it's your network. And let me ask.
Yeah, the, the other thing is, Johnny, on, uh, because you're using an iPhone, I think it comes through at, uh, your picture looks a lot better than everybody else's, so that's good.
Oh, good.
But the, the resolution comes through a lot higher, so I think that's why it's a little more jittery.
Yeah.
Takes more bandwidth.
Yeah, yeah, and we just confirmed with, uh, IT that it's, that's what it appears to be, is.
Okay, well, then I'm just getting audio and I'm, uh, sitting here looking at, at Susan.
Is there something wrong with me?
Not at all. I just couldn't imagine you sitting that still for that long and then I realized it was just a photograph.
Yeah, I'm not gonna respond to that question.
But for what it's.
And Johnny, you're not aging. You remember that because you're not moving. You're not aging, so therefore.
Yeah, right. Okay, well, it's a yoga pose, so we're both doing shavasana.
You, Johnny, you look like you're hiding a ventilator under that, uh, bandana.
Yeah, right. I was gonna even pull it up, but I can't because, uh, it just looks like I got my neck brace on, uh, Randy.
The only thing, I, I've been on a number of these Zoom meetings, uh, if, if everybody mutes it when they're not talking, sometimes that can help the jitteriness of the, of the video because the audio is trying to pick up every noise. So sometimes that can help if it gets.
Well, what I have is just nothing. It's just the pictures. So I guess I'm on audio, so let's proceed with the meeting. Uh, so where, Suzie, did you have another question or did, uh, we move past that?
I just didn't know how we were gonna proceed. Um, I'll, I'll leave it up to someone else. I mean, we're gonna discuss Ben Franklin, is that correct? And farmer's market?
So, under this item, yeah, any, any necessary response to the coronavirus, the intent was to be able to talk about any necessary response to the coronavirus and and items related to that. So, um, the farmer's market and, uh, Ben Franklin, if there's questions or concerns, those would, this would be the item to discuss them under.
Well, if, if I can say one thing, I want, I wanna support James real quickly on the, uh, on the mask situation. And I just wanted to add that when James talks about some of the unique circumstances in Ojai, I, I thought about it a lot and, you know, we, we have limited the size of our essential businesses, specifically the grocery stores. They've tried to expand before and we didn't let them. And, um, we should just all be aware that the, literally, the grocery stores in Ojai are, are a different size and are more cramped than anywhere else in the county. And I think that's, if, 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 not that we even needed any reason, because I think it's a good idea anyway. But there is clearly a difference in the limited number of essential businesses we have tend to be in cramped quarters. Um, I just wanted everyone to know that I think that's a good fact that separates us from some of the other county and supports why we, with the mask ordinance.
And wearing the masks is for the benefit of the clerks and the people working in the store every bit as much or more than it is for the customers. Over forty people working in grocery stores have died of the coronavirus nationwide. So, and maybe their employer didn't provide them with much protection, but, uh, if we don't do something as citizens when we go into shop, uh, it's pretty hard to get through the, uh, register without getting in close contact with somebody.
Yeah.
I respect the county's decision not to do it. I'm, I'm, I'm surprised, but I respect it and I think that's okay, but I, I'm concerned if the county doesn't respect our decision to do it. And I think that we have every good reason, and the cost benefit analysis is pretty simple. There's substantial benefit or at least some benefit, and I think there's very little, if any, cost.
Right.
Can I, uh, Mayor, can I, um, just?
Yeah, Randy.
I'm probably out in the, in the world probably a little more than most of you, and my observation is what we did was absolutely right. But also, um, the businesses that I have entered, like I was at a Wells Fargo Bank in Ventura today, so I masked up. And it was interesting, I was one of the only people wearing one, even the tellers weren't wearing them, but obviously they're behind glass. Um, but if you go to Lowe's.
You put your mask on and they didn't arrest you? It was a bank?
Oh, I thought it was funny. I said, I said, imagine going to a bank with a mask on, but, um, the, but if you go, I've been to Lowe's and I've been to Wells, uh, and I've been to Home Depot, and I'll be honest with you. They are managing the people entering their store. They are all in gloves. They are all in masks. They have people cleaning, uh, um, you know, the carts. Uh, I, I mean, they've really taken it seriously. So I agree with Ryan. I, I go out, as much as I'd like to see the whole county do what we're doing. Um, I do respect the fact that there are a lot of players out there that are doing what's right, so.
Yeah, I'm with you, Randy. I, I've heard that I think some Vonses even outside of Ojai are, are making it mandatory to wear face masks or other stores are anyway, which is a pretty good indication that if the private businesses are seeing some value in it, that, uh, we're on the right track.
Well, and, and if you're operating a business out in, outside of Ojai, um, you know, you have to have a business plan. You've got to provide, you know, wash stations. There's a lot of things that you're required to do. Um, so I, again, uh, you know, they're doing a lot. We just don't, you know, we don't see it, but they're doing a lot.
May I make one more, one more comment? Um, I agree that it's, uh, really a good, a good prudent to wear the, the mask inside, do the, all the exposure, especially, especially from the, for the cashiers and, and do the cramped quarters and all the reasons that you gave. But I'm still seeing a lot of people, they'll be the only person for miles around, wearing a face mask, and I don't know if they're doing it voluntarily or because they think they have to. So I think it's good to clarify so that people don't get burned out on this. I want people to wear the masks indoors where it's appropriate. But they ought, they should know that if they're out walking at six AM, walking their dog, and there's no one in sight, they do not have to wear a mask. That's correct.
But, but our, but our directive doesn't say that. It says entering and inside an essential establishment. Has nothing to do with, you know, I've answered, I don't know how many emails about where to wear them, and it's like, no, the answer is in, not outside. It's a, it's a private choice out there.
Well, Randy, Randy, not to nitpick, just to make, I think outside except for the farmer's market potentially. Where you're there, I think there's, right, except for the.
That'll have a different policy.
Exactly, just wanted to, just wanted to.
Thank you.
But I think that because I'm seeing so many people, even people riding bikes, wearing a mask, I think there's still some misunderstanding with the public, and I think it's good to make clear while we're on the subject, that when people are out in the fresh air and there's no one around, they do not have to wear a mask unless they want to. That's fine. But they don't have to. That's all.
Yes, that, that's true, and we will, um, we, uh, we did a, a video update. Chief, Chief Rivera, who is here six feet from me, um, so he's on camera. Um, but Chief Rivera and I did an update last week and we, we pointed that out and, uh, but, uh, I think there is, uh, some confusion about it, so we'll, we'll try to make sure to keep, uh, explaining that to people.
Thank you.
Yeah, James, I'll say too, some of the confusion I think stemmed from, there was a report out of somewhere that talked about heavy breathing and jogging and everybody saw that black picture with the, with the kind of nebulous human and that, and then, then there was a lot of debunking of that because it wasn't a verified study. But regardless, there's no prob, I mean, right? You don't have to wear one when you're outside, but you can. But if you're in an essential business in Ojai, you need to.
Mayor, could I ask James a question?
Certainly, go, Bill.
James, uh, what is the, what was the date, uh, that we're looking at extending? The county's looking at extending the, uh, stay-at-home order to again?
I believe it's May fifteenth is what, uh, Dr. Levin announced this morning.
I wanna, I wanna throw out a piece of good news there. The international health metrics and evaluation model has California going to zero deaths per day in the state of California by May fifteenth.
Wow.
I'm looking at the model right now.
Okay, let's hope it works.
Yeah, and they're, they're also looking at by, uh, May, uh, eleven, twelve, thirteen, getting down to baseline in terms of demands on hospital capacity.
Yeah, Dr. Levin always does a good job of explaining in the meetings how, you know, the, the, uh, the numbers right now are reflecting the efforts that the cities, the county, the residents, the businesses, everybody's making right now. And, uh, you know, the fact that the numbers haven't been what people feared they would be and are, are, have been as positive, you know, as, as we could have hoped. Um, and so.
And I think another comment on that in terms of the importance and, and support of face covering is when, to, to me, I got convinced when the percentages from research came out showing how many non sympto, how you, how many people are non-symptomatic but nevertheless contagious?
Right.
A, and, uh, you know, and, and, you know, that, that and the, and the, of course, our older population, but that's, that's very significant. And until we can ramp up the testing, either antibody testing or infection testing, I think that, uh, uh, mask, face covering is, makes perfect sense. The governor in, in his news conference today mentioned that that's probably gonna be part of the protocols for reopening businesses. Uh, the CDC has said the same thing. And so I think that, um, we're also, we're on the right track in terms of establishing this protocol as part of reopening as well, you know? Um, my last comment is, hearing the Newsom's press conference today, he was talking about setting up physical standards for open, for allowing businesses to reopen. And I'm a little concerned, and maybe this also is associated with the Ben Franklin discussion, that it not be, you know, just a big box kind of negotiation. In other words, we're gonna talk to the big corporates first before we get to the mom and pops. We can't, we really gotta make sure we have a seat at the table and, and, and protect our small business community because that's part of who we are as a community, is not big box. And I, I would help kind of a big box focus. I would hate for that to displace what we need to have in terms of the same emphasis on reopening our small businesses as, as maybe other cities would have on their big businesses, the corporate big boxes. But just a comment about how we can make sure we plug into this, uh, effort that the governor announced today.
Okay, are there other comments on James' report?
Johnny, if I may.
Yep, Ryan?
Um, first, I want to ask a que, James, you were, you, you, you talked to Dr. Levin today. Have, have you heard him retract or any other retraction or change of what I believe the last forecast that he was still standing by was two hundred to two hundred and fifty deaths in the county?
I think today, I don't remember numbers off the top of my head, but he made a point, uh, and, and I'll clarify that today, I didn't talk to him today. We, I think he was on our call yesterday. But today he did a presentation at the board of supervisors meeting, which is, uh, available on the Ventura County website as well, but he did mention that the original forecast, that they had originally forecast up to a thousand deaths, and he said that they were currently at, is it ten, I think, that we're at currently? And he said, the, the, I think he said that they're, um, they may not reach a hundred, which is, again, reflects all the work going into it. You know, he's, he was saying, it's not that the forecasts were off, it's that everybody's doing their part, so.
And we started early or earlier than the other state.
Well, it lasts, I mean, whatever it was a week ago, I mean, he literally went from a thousand on a Tuesday and changed it to two hundred on a Thursday, so. I wondered if he changed it from there, but that's all good news. And my only other question, or I, I should say, my other comment is on, uh, dovetails with what, uh, Bill was saying. Um, I, I, I think that the county, exactly what you were saying, Bill, I think the, now, I don't want to forecast what the county is gonna deal with absolute certainty, but I'm concerned that the economy in the county, that they're gonna start kind of starting it back up from what they see as the most important to what they see as the least important, which I think from the county perspective would be getting the big box stores open, getting the, um, car dealerships open, getting, you know, all those big tax base entities open for the county and the, then the big cities with probably hospitality and the tourism style industry last.
Okay, a point, Ryan, Ryan, a point of clarification. There is very little, uh, sales tax and commercial outside the municipalities, so that's mostly for the benefit of the cities if they do that.
Oh, I, I, Johnny, believe me, I know, but I still think that the, when you, even for like the city of Oxnard, most of the cities are all going to be consistent in getting their biggest tax base from that, and I think.
Yeah, Oxnard and Cameron, I guess, sure.
Right, right. I just think that the county, I anticipate, and again, I, I am, I am forecast, I am guessing frankly what I think the county will do, but I am concerned that they may favor those style businesses because frankly, they benefit a larger swath of the county than what is specific to our economics here in Ojai. And I have a feeling that we may, the hospitality slash um, tourism style industries are probably going to be the last to see things opened up and the most heavy restrictions on those. I, not that there's an answer. It should be a science-based answer that we don't have yet, but I do think it's time for us in Ojai to start thinking about maybe how we can help facilitate the county to come to a decision to open up some of the more hospitality slash tourism style industries. And I think that.
And small retail, and small.
And, and specifically small retail too, which, which really tie together in our community especially. And I, I had a conversation, I called Jamie Fleming before our meeting today, and I, I tried to get some feedback and, uh, I just said, look, whatever the inn is doing and what some of our, you know, what their protocols and policies might be to open back up, I heard they're aiming for about June first as well. Um, we, I, I just, we may need to, the city of Ojai and the valley may be in a position similar to the, the farmer's market where we need to develop our own plan and tell the county, hey, here's what we're, here's what we're proposing to be able to get these things open, which may not be on the same schedule as everything else. I don't know if that'll work or not, but I, I do think that we will be in a, we may be quickly in a position where being able to, to help that may help our local economy much more than the county is worried about it, because they're looking at it from a little bit different standpoint.
I would like that to include realtors, because they're taking a huge hit is my understanding. Just to even show a house, I, I was told they have to sterilize the house. It's almost impossible.
Mayor?
Yeah, yeah, right, uh, Randy?
Again, it seems like this is, um, somewhat of a comment session, and, and Suzie, I, I, I hear you on that. Um, on that stuff. I think, I think one of the most important things we do is we've gotta put facts to a lot of rumors, but, um, so I'm not aware of things like that, and you might be, but I'm glad you're bringing them up. I think the most important thing that we do moving forward is that we participate, our, our city manager, and as many of us um, participate in interacting with other council people in the county. And that, that we come up with, with a, uh, with what, what Ryan was saying, maybe a list of our protocols. I see the policies that we're putting in place and the policies of the county, uh, we need to be, need to remain intact. And what we need to do is like, I believe is this plan that we're having the farmer's marker, market do. I could see us requiring all the other businesses and all the, all the small, all the small businesses in our community come up with a plan that starts with maybe a thirty percent opening to a seventy-five percent to a hundred percent over a four-month, five-month period. But, but I agree, we need to be thinking as a team and as a, um, a solid body of how we see this, how we see this envisioning going forward. And then talking to the people that we can to influence them, especially at the county level, because we're gonna be dictated just like this Ben Franklin. We're gonna be dictated by some policies that we may not necessarily agree with. That's why we need to be on the ground floor as to what we see is in, uh, what is in the best interest, not of just us, but also in small businesses in general. So, um, you know, I, I think we need, we need to be proactive in that discussion with fellow council people of the cities, um, in the county.
I think we also need to be, uh, very realistic about the dilemma that we face, which is, we all know that we're heavily dependent upon tourism. Tourism by its nature is people coming and going from places unknown, bringing in and taking out things that we can't see in the case of the coronavirus. Uh, so without testing, good testing, it's gonna be a real challenge to, uh, revive our economy in the short term.
I agree. That's why I don't, I don't see it being a short term. I see it being, like I said, to me, I see this being three to four months before we're where, where it's not, and I'm not gonna use the word normal. I'm using the word thirty percent, forty percent of capacity in our businesses. I don't see exploding overnight. Um, and again, if we do something that we can manage, you keep the protocols in place. You do it incrementally so that you can measure what are the results. And again, and hopefully have enhanced testing. Um, there's just so much that has to be done. Uh, and again, I think this body moving forward, you know, listening to what Ryan and, and Suzie and, and Bill and, and Johnny, you've said, I think we're all on the same page. We just have to, how we're gonna communicate that and how we're gonna have our city manager who sits in these countywide meetings, what type of influence he can start generating. I think that's gonna be important.
Right, but it's highly important that we do it coordinated with the county, because this is not, you know, an Ojai problem. This is an Ojai Valley, Ventura, River Valley, Ventura, then, you know, on out into the, the universe, uh, that, uh, what they do is gonna affect us. We have the blessing of being somewhat isolated. We also have the curse that if it comes into our little area, it could be spread rather quickly, so. Okay, uh, Rich, uh, James, do you have anything else on this item or should we go to the number three?
I, I still have a question.
Oh, Susan?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, uh, is, are we satisfied with the map and the plan of farmer's market? It looked good to me. My feeling is that it's, you know, maybe it can't be completely perfect, but it's certainly better, healthier than being in a, in an aisle at Bons or something, you know, the proximity in an indoor store. I mean, I feel like we're holding them to a very high standard. And I just wanna make sure that they can reopen. What's, what's, what's everyone, what's the consensus as to the plan? Because I, I.
Well, I'll, I'll respond.
Yeah, Randy, I knew you had a problem with the, yeah, the back and.
Yeah, I just, uh, yeah, watch, I, I think, I, I think the most important thing is what's the goal? And the goal, the, you know, what are we trying to achieve by reopening this market? And that is to provide fresh produce and, and farmer-available, uh, generated food, um, products to our community. It's not to recreate, um, an environment like we've had in the past on Sunday morning going to the farmer's market. So to me, that's how I look at it is they've restricted the amount of, of people selling, which is good. I don't think we need a tamale stand, and I don't think we need anything of that nature. Um, and I think there, uh, the way she went about seventy-five people, I'm, I'm not opposed to that, uh, um, but I don't think we need to put people going up one aisle and coming down the other aisle, so there's an opportunity for interaction. I think you need to go, you need to shop, you need to leave. And if we create that environment, that's, we're, we're meeting our goal. That's, that's my take. I'm, I'm, obviously, and I, and, and I believe ultimately, and I've asked James, it is that they go out there instead of waiting till Sunday morning at seven o'clock to set this up, no one's in that parking lot. Close it down and go set it up on a Friday or a Thursday evening and do a walkthrough and see what the issues are. So they come Sunday morning when they're ready to open, boom, they've got these problems pretty much solved. I mean, there's always gonna be, um, concerns when you're moving that much, that many people around, but there's an opportunity there to see it, demonstrate it before you do it. And I think that's a win for us. But when it does open, it opens up smoothly and allows the people to, to shop. But when it does open, it opens up smoothly and allows the people to, to shop, and that's what we're trying to do.
And, and is that possible, that they can set up that far ahead of time, is that?
They can chalk it out, Suzie. They can paint out their stalls.
Oh, you're talking about.
Yeah, they could line their pathways, they could chalk where their station is, they, they could do that.
Why not? That sounds good.
And do it with Greg and James, you know, give some input.
Yeah, that sounds good.
But you know, if it's for essential nutrition, what is the problem with, and since this is a portable, set it up and take it down, why not do it over in the Nordoff High School parking lot where there's plenty of open space and plenty of parking?
They, well, my under, okay.
Yeah, we, we, we did initially request that, that was our, our first effort. There, they had several concerns about Nordoff that they mentioned, including they, they were concerned that there wasn't enough shaded area for, for visitors, that the permits go with the location, so that they'd have to get all new permits from the county and, and and that that was going to be a challenge, and they, they couldn't get a, an answer on the timeline for that. And then that the, the, it would, it would just discourage more farmers from participating, you know, not wanting to go to a new location that was untested.
Does each farmer have to get the permit, or does the farmer's market get the permit?
The farmer's market gets the permit.
That sounds like more of an excuse than a reason, I can't believe that it'd be that hard to go over to a high school in an open area and get a permit. They do it all the time for carnivals and all sorts of things year-round, I don't know why they couldn't do it for something that's established as the farmer's market, but I don't think they want to do it, so, okay, enough, I won't beat that one to death. Is there any other comment regarding the topic of the virus?
Well, at least we didn't hear that they couldn't do it because of the cutout at Nordoff, thank God. Didn't hear that. No, I, Johnny, I heard this, I think, I don't know if it's an issue with the, because I think the county has to inspect the facility, I don't know if the county's doing inspections, I don't know if county health is, I don't know if they're working right now.
I think they needed three permits, health department, fire department, and one other.
The State Department of Food and Agriculture has to permit the farmer's market as well. The basis for that permit requirement is so that the farmers can sell product without complying with the state's food and labeling laws, so the, I don't know how fast the state's going to be willing to issue a new permit at this stage. The lack of that permit isn't something that would create liability for the city, but it would create possible liability for the farmers if they're, if the state enforces against them for selling products without having complied with the labeling laws at a non-licensed farmer's market. I don't know if the farmers are willing to bear that risk or not, hence the operator seems to be focused on trying to create a safe space at the current location.
Yeah, well, I don't see that moving a permit, what, a mile, mile and a half at most, would be a problem if we got our legislation, but I, I'm one of the high-risk people, and I'm staying at home, so I'm not going to go facilitate it, but it just seems to me that there, it's a problem that's being made larger than it needs to be, but if they got a good map and they can do it where they are, God bless them.
Are, are you saying that if the county was under better leadership, like its former CEO, they would have had it done?
Oh, that'd probably be a good idea, Ryan. When Patrick Lindberg was here, yeah. Okay, okay, next topic, item number three, recommended savings.
I think we're going to touch, Johnny, I'm sorry, Mayor, are we, are we going to touch on Ben Franklin or, or James, have you come to a conclusion on that?
So the, my position on it is the, you know, we've looked at it, we've analyzed the order and everything, the county has the authority, it's a public health order issued by the county public health officer, who is the, you know, the voice for the entire county on these issues. So my position will, is that the county has that ability to do that. We, you know, we obviously had concerns and disagreed, so the city, my position is that we won't be doing, doing this, but the county, the county has the ability to do so.
And just to add to that, I've also looked at it and had confirmed and concludes that on the present facts, there isn't a basis to bring a city prosecution. Whether the county uses its recent enforcement tools will be up to the county. If they do so, the business may wish to fight. The last would, option before the council, if you desire, would be to direct a letter to go out back to the county asserting the problems with the county's current order. Whether to do so or not is a policy choice, it may be viewed as a shot across the bow, it may also be viewed as city interference in county public health operations.
I would like to, Mayor, may I speak?
Yes, you may.
I would like to make the case that we should put together a letter, because it circles back to the reasons I went, talked about earlier. In terms of, of standing up for our business community, that might be overlooked because of its, you know, smaller size and the fact that we don't have any, you know, by policy, we don't have corporate presence in this community, we don't want it. I think we should express our concerns with the sort of the, the one-size-fits-all lack of granularity and lack of collaboration that the county is exhibiting with this situation. So I, I would argue that perhaps we do draft a, a statement what we see are the problems with their reasoning.
I, I support what Bill said, I was there ten days ago and all the cashiers were wearing masks. They couldn't control, you know, that the customers weren't, were wearing masks. I was so happy that they were open, that I could get things instead of having to order from Amazon, it was, you know.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Or having to travel down to the stores.
Or having to travel to a community spread area in Ventura that has larger spaces than we do.
What, what essential things do they sell there?
They have office supplies, art supplies, I had.
Fuel supplies.
Fuel supplies, I bought.
Masks, face coverings.
Learning stuff, yeah.
They sell face coverings?
They sell the materials to make face coverings.
I know, but we're really stretching it, guys, you know.
I don't think so.
Definition of an essential business, you could make the same argument for many, many businesses, and if all of the clerks and people working in the stores wore masks, then I guess that would be okay, but I, I, I think it's fine, if we want to send a letter to the county saying we, we would like clarification, because we don't understand the distinction you're making between Ben Franklin's and dollar stores or things of that sort, I think that would be appropriate, but otherwise, we're wasting staff time and annoying the county, and I don't think it's going to get us anyplace. I think we just ask them to, you know, explain their position a little more clearly, and maybe they'd think it again, and maybe this is just coming from one or two people at the county. If we could file, you know, something with Mr. Bennett's office and ask him to get back to us why this is being done and what can be done about it.
Okay, I agree with that.
Mayor, can I, can I weigh in just?
Yeah, Randy?
I, you know, my, I, I'm not opposed to anything like that, I just think that we need to be realistic here. James has spent over three hours with these people, they're not going to move, they're, they're not going to change. And to me, the reality is, there's no reason to get antagonistic with these people. We're going to need them down the road to work with us, and we have to work with them. I don't know what the letter achieves other than, again, just us being adamant or standing strong about something, but it's not going to change their opinion, and.
I agree with you.
And if James says, you want it closed, do you do it, let them put the resources into it, and let them be the bad guy. We should just stand down and let them do what they're going to do.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
I, I agree, this is a tough one, I, I think everything you just said, Randy, is spot on, I do not like the idea of, this is not the battle for us to pick with the county, I think there's better battles to fight, even though I think it's righteous. The flip side is, we're a town of arguably a lot of artists and individuals that make their living a lot differently than the rest of this county. And what I don't know for sure, and I can't have anybody tell me for sure, is that the county may not see, and, and I, and there's a thirty-three percent requirement for essential products in an essential business, however, if you sell five percent of your stuff, and it's essential to me making a living, and I can't get it anywhere else without driving out of town, then does that create an essentialness that should be exempted from what the overall broad brush stroke rule is, and I'm concerned that there's individuals in the Ojai community that utilize Ben Franklin to be able to make a living for stuff they make, or, or for school or other important essential factors, and I don't know if they can get that stuff anywhere else around here. And now if they can, then the other businesses, it's not essential either, probably, under the county rules, but.
But the county rules respected school supplies and supporting home.
Right, I mean, look, we all know this, if I was selling ink and print, you know, print toner and, and ink for a computer, nobody's saying it's not essential, but if it's art supplies and arts and crafts that may not always be the way most people make their living, we're a little different up here, so I, I just concerned about that, I mean, the last thing we would do is tell an artist who works by themselves and is continuing to try and make a living that they can't get the supplies they want, or they should have to order them online versus supporting a local small business.
That's, that, that's why I'm saying this is a, this is a tough one.
It's tough, I mean, the last thing I want to do is argue with the county on it, honestly, I don't want, it's not a fight.
Okay, but if we don't argue, we just simply, if we simply acknowledge the directive we receive, we pass it to the store owner, and we write our letter saying we are concerned and confused a bit as to the logic behind this, is there anyone out there that understands, and then make our argument? That's respectful, we don't need to.
I agree. Johnny, I don't disagree, but let me, let me ask this, James, now, I'm still willing to do that, but I, I hate asking the same question twice and expecting a different answer. James, and is your feeling that, by the way, ask Tiffany at the school district how I feel about that. James, have, do you feel like you've already gotten an up and down, I mean, Randy just said it, that they're not going to change their mind, I mean, is, is asking for clarification on an issue that's settled worth it, or is it time to decide we have to move on from trying to change their mind?
What are you, are you suggesting we don't do anything? I think that's okay too, it, it's not going to change the outcome.
No, I guess what I mean is that you were, like, like you just said, and, and Mr. Mayor, frankly, it was a valid point, that we don't want to waste staff time, or it's, you know, if it's not worth it, but is sending them the letter what's not worth it? Because they've already made a decision and we're not going to change their opinion.
Depends on your purpose.
Well.
If your, if your purpose is to be on record, that's one thing, I don't need to be on the record personally, I don't think the city does. I think that if we're, we think we're going to change something by the letter, I think it is a waste of time.
I, I get that. Well, I, I just, I guess my answer, I guess my only question is this. James, do you feel like the county has ultimately made its decision, or is there an opportunity for us to try and lobby to say, hey, we disagree with it, and they still might change? Or, or I guess another way to say it, as Johnny just articulated, is is sending a letter just to get it on the record, or is it have some value in maybe changing their opinion?
I think sending the letter is, it would be, the purpose would be to get it on the record. We've had hours worth of discussions with the county, which to their credit, you know, to their credit, they're taking the time to have those discussions with us, and we talked through a lot of the issues. We, we just disagree, and that was the last conversation we had with the county today, was, you know, we just, we respectfully disagree. I think, I think the decision's been made, but that being said, we, all the conversations have been verbal, so I think there may be, you know, value, value to putting, you know, a little bit of time, you know, an hour into, into drafting a letter and sending it to them, so it's on the record. I don't think it will change anything.
All right, let me, let me ask this question then. Is a arts and crafts supply business essential under the county order?
No, and they, they noted on the call this afternoon that they close Michael's and Joanne's throughout the, throughout the county.
Yeah, but at the same time, they're keeping other places that sell similar products open, again, to support home-based businesses and school supplies.
Well, the risk, the risk of coronavirus in these businesses seems so minimal, and the detriment to our local individuals not being able to, I mean, I, I don't know if there are artists who, who are having a hard time getting supplies because of this, but I have to think that if these businesses sell those supplies, that there are people that buy them, and the people that buy them probably need them.
So why don't we just spend a little extra time, after everything that's been invested, just doing what Johnny says and just writing a clarification note for the record, and that be done with it?
So as it stands now, all throughout Ventura County, all art supply stores are closed, is that correct? And, and, I mean, where, so everybody is just shopping online, is that what?
That makes, that makes our, having to drive or having to go to a store that doesn't specialize in that, I just, I see that fundamentally contradictory to the idea of supporting home-based businesses.
I, I think it's, I think, I agree with you, Bill, I think what it is, is that unlike individuals, unlike our council and people in Ojai, who we really understand that a large segment of our economics are, are built on arts and, and crafts and these types of things, I think that the county dismisses it as being non-economically important, because it's like, you know, it's not a business as they're commonly used to, where again, our community is substantially different.
Yeah.
And, and I don't, I don't know how many people it's impacting negatively here, I haven't heard from anyone, but I would hate the idea of, you know, like I said, any, everybody knows we could go buy ink and toner for a printer right now, and nobody's going to say you can't. But to not be able to get supplies to do, you know, an art piece.
It's the same thing, really.
Let me, let me break, let me break in, guys.
These concerns in a short note and be done with it, you know?
Yeah.
Mayor, I just have.
Just a second, folks, let me break in for a minute for procedure, do we have any public comments?
No.
Okay, still no? Okay, well, at least we asked, okay, good. Okay, proceed, do we have a motion out there? Does somebody want to make a motion?
Well, I, I just have one final comment, Mayor. You know, again, if I, if I was, if I was the owner of Ben Franklin, and, and I had heard this conversation tonight, and I had seen the city manager go to bat for me personally for over three hours, and the city council said, let's write a letter, let's clarify our position and why we believe that this entity deserves to be open. If I'm the owner of that company, then you know what, I think that my, that, that my council has gone to bat for me. So I would support this letter just based on that, that we're clearly demonstrating to the community that we're unique, we recognize our uniqueness, and that we're willing to support any of our businesses in any manner that we feel that we should, and.
Okay, is that a motion, Randy?
That is my motion, let's write.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved in second, James, you understand what, what your marching orders will be if this passes?
Yes, we will write a, a letter and, to the county, and then, you know, it's up to them to enforce essentially.
Yeah, okay, is there any further discussion? If not, we'll vote, or I guess we, we can do it without objection. Suzie, did I hear you say something?
The letter will make clear that all the safety protocols will be strictly observed and enforced.
Yeah, we'll make the argument of why we think it can be done safely, yeah.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, is there any objection to the motion? If not, by unanimous vote, James, you got an hour to spend on writing a letter, make it a good one.
You start with Ben Franklin, our best president.
Yeah, right.
Mayor, I have a, Mayor, before we go on to item three, I just had something that I, I meant to do before we started this discussion tonight. I needed to share this with the council and with the community of, and who is listening. Tom Ash passed away.
Oh.
Last night at two o'clock in the morning.
Oh.
And all of us know Tom well, especially how he supported and, and generated so much.
Oh, my goodness.
Goodwill regarding water in this valley, for a guy who lives, for a gentleman who lives in Orange County. So I was handed a, I was given an email today, when everything's over, I'll send this, I'll forward the email to everyone. Ellen, I always have.
Scolar, Scolar.
Scolar is the one who sent it, and Lynn, Tom's wife, would like to do something later on in the year, maybe the summer, maybe do something in Ojai, just celebrating Tom's life, and so I just wanted to take a moment, if we could, just a moment of silence and just offer a prayer to Tom and to Lynn, and then we could move on.
Okay, well, why don't we adjourn the meeting in Tom's honor, and people can make their comments at that point, will that be okay?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, James, you got item number three, recommended savings.
Yeah, so the challenge with this situation, you know, I know everybody's got challenges in the, the economy essentially is at a, you know, standstill, but one of the challenges that we noticed talking to other cities is that everybody's trying to be careful not to overreact to something that may be temporary, that is likely to be temporary, but also, you know, the urge to not, you know, stand still and not react to something that need, that should be reacted to.
But also, uh, you know, the urge to not um, you know, uh, stand still and not react to something that need that should be reacted to. So it's been a struggle. Um, the uh, report in the in the packet notes, uh, essentially, we bet uh, myself and the finance director and we went through our budget. And we tried to find a balance um and not go overboard on, you know, permanent cuts to a temporary situation, but also not just standing pat and hoping things work out. So we uh, we provided a uh, a list of changes of um postpone items that we can postpone that would result in some savings to the city approximately $150,000 for the remainder of the fiscal year. Um, you know, our budget is very tight, so there are very little cuts that that we have, very few cuts that we have that are easy cuts. So uh, you know, these are things like um, some key positions being frozen for for the three months. But we, you know, we think that it's reasonable under these circumstances. It's the event coordinator position, the recreation coordinator position, and the accounting specialist position. Holding those vacant would save uh almost $75,000 for the for the city over the next three months. Um, uh, things like uh reducing training over the next couple of months, paid training opportunities. We we instead are asking staff to find um to use our uh joint powers, uh CJPIA to to obtain free, you know, free or webinar trainings that are lower cost. Um, things, uh, some other things include, uh, you know, we we have to be recreating summer programs listed, which would be um approximately 20, I think it was $22,000 in savings. Uh, and the key question that we aren't sure at this time if if we're going to be able to hold those recreation summer programs or if if this is lifted, you know, in May, if we'll have the time to get the staff and the materials to get those summer programs going. So so there's uh, the list in attachment A of the staff report shows $150,000 in recommended uh, you know, savings. And then it has additionally optional savings, which I don't recommend at this time. But there are things that we could reduce further, which include reducing code enforcement, reducing uh, community outreach budget and reducing uh, and potentially uh postponing the um pre-funding of the pension that we've been doing. But again, those three items are not recommended yet, but we've listed them there as optional items. Um, so at this time, we're we're recommending the $150,000 in savings with basically the plan would be uh, we are planning to hold a budget committee committee meeting in the next couple of weeks to further review the budget and review the latest information um regarding uh funding from the state and federal government um for the coronavirus response and then determining whether additional savings are needed. The last thing I'll add is uh, I think a lot of people have been hearing about the different programs and funding available for businesses, residences, and there there actually is supposed to be funding available for cities. The latest news on that funding for the cities is that essentially funding from the state, our funding from the federal government um for cities over 500,000 people will be fairly direct. It goes to uh, it'll go to the um I believe it's to the county and then and then to the city. But for cities under 500,000 people, uh, it's not clear still at this point whether whether how or whether the funding will make it to those cities.
Up to the county, whether they want to be acting as a fiscal agent for distribution to the cities in Ventura County?
Well, my understanding on the the for the cities under 500,000 is the funding will go to the state and then the state will be responsible for doling it out.
Oh, it doesn't go to the county. Okay.
No, which is uh, which is why it's uh, it's a little more unclear than the larger cities.
Okay, James, just to clarify, wasn't wasn't, it was originally stated from the federal government that it would go to the counties and then be doled out. But now it's now the latest is it's going at best, it's going to go to the state and then go to get doled out from there. Is that wasn't at one point, wasn't it said it was going to the counties at best, but now it looks like it's just going to the state?
Yeah, when they originally announced it, they just, they didn't have that distinction of the population sizes. So it was just announced of uh, funding will go to the states and the counties and and then eventually to the cities. But yeah, that's been, that's been something we've covered.
The 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 legislation said jurisdictions over 500,000.
Mm hmm.
And then so it looks like now there's there's an implementation of administrative interpretation as to what jurisdiction means.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Government probably realized too much money was going to California, so they changed that.
Uh, Mayor, I have a couple of questions of of James.
Yeah, Bill, go.
Uh, James, the uh, training and education, does that include all? I I I would advocate that all of the training budgeted for the commissions ought to be either eliminated or deferred for the year. Is that included in that?
Yes, so how we did it this year is we created like one, one pot of training that had to be approved by the city manager rather than section, commission by commission. So this includes a big chunk of the training. There's a little bit of training left, so if something absolutely critical came up, but my my um, my assumption is that is we're not going to have any training for the commissioners for the remainder of this fiscal year.
And the other question is about deferring the the pace of the general plan update, given the fact of difficulties of doing that in these circumstances. Will there be any reasonable savings from that?
So we are going to slow it down. We've talked about that and we have a, we're putting a plan together to slow it down. It will result in less money spent this year, but because it comes from its own restricted fund, it doesn't make a a general fund impact.
Okay.
Quick question. Oh, sorry, Randy, go ahead.
Mayor, I have one question, just on the um, the cannabis compliance. It's uh, it's uh, it looks like a substantial savings. What um, what are we saving and and what what are we giving up regarding cannabis?
Yeah, at the beginning of the year when we budgeted, we had uh, we had planned to hire a uh uh HDL, our tax auditors to to monitor the cannabis businesses. Um, we haven't rolled that out yet this year, even if we were to um, you know, focus on it completely now, it probably wouldn't roll out this year. So we could still make it a priority next year, like, you know, when I say next year, we're talking about the fiscal year, so that's July 1st. Uh, but it's just, it wasn't likely to get done and.
Would we do that without a tax?
Without a.
Would that be just without a without a city tax?
Yeah, that that was part of this whole discussion is that we haven't implemented a tax yet and we collect the fee from them uh, for the uh, when they apply. So there isn't really a a big need for it at this time.
And then.
Oh, sorry, Randy, go ahead.
I'm I'm just, and in the same lines when I was, when I was looking over the uh skate park maintenance and the contract service for street side. So you've pretty much um eliminated all contract servicing for the community. Is am am I correct in that?
So we froze, we froze uh contracts. There are a couple of contracts that are moving forward, like the uh, the light pole replacement that we just approved because we uh, we felt that that was a potential hazard. But yeah, things like the skate park maintenance. Unfortunately, none of us are happy about it, but we we closed the skate park and it's not being used. So, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna spend resources maintaining it over the next three months.
Okay. Real, real quick, James, um, how how many in the rec department stuff? I assume this accounts for when you're saying the savings. Is it accounting for there being nobody in the program? Or do some of these pro, some of these programs aren't a net loss of this much, are they?
Right, there's um, some of the recreation programs or most of the recreation programs have some revenues coming in to offset. These estimates are 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 the savings portions. Uh, everything on this list we're estimating is a is a will be a savings from it. So.
So well, all right, so if it was like contracted specialty camps, 5290, for example.
Mm hmm.
But if if we ran that, we would we be losing 5290? Or would it be making back some amount of that if it if it went on as normal?
So it depends on the the program, the contracted specialty camps is the one that um uh, is is actually probably the the worst example for me on this. The other ones actually have, those are the yeah, the other programs listed, the youth flag football, the basketball, those are actually the costs of running it. The contracted specialty camps, now that you're mentioning it, I'm not sure about that one off the top of my.
Well, I I, the only reason I ask is that if we do decide to pick from this list, right, if it's 5290 and we're not saving 5290, we're saving a hundred, you know, a thousand dollars, but we're taking away that from the community. I just, that that would be the best. And we're not really probably, I don't think, I I'm assuming we're not going through and making decisions right now about what we might or might not cut. This is more of a guideline moving forward. But I just want to make sure, like, it'd be easy to say, hey, you know, day camps and excursions 9600, but if that brings in money or it, you know, it ultimately breaks even, then we're not really saving anything.
Right, right. And so this, the goal of this discussion is essentially, I I want to get a feel in some direction from council of how aggressive to be with with some of these, with, you know, with with certain areas of whether we make reductions or not. So um, like I mentioned at the beginning, we're going to have a budget committee meeting. Uh, Mike, I'm trying to set up a budget committee committee meeting for two weeks out where we'd go in detail, line item by line item. But I I guess the direction I'm looking for on this is if there's anything uh, you know, that we wouldn't want to touch for now, uh, you know, that would just be off limits or if there uh or just general feedback on if we should be, if there's a need to be more aggressive or uh less aggressive. But I think we've tried to find a sweet spot of um, of trying to be uh ahead of the curve, but not, you know, not cut anything that is absolutely critical over the next three months. Uh, so in short, to answer your question, uh, we can uh, when we have the budget committee meeting, we can look closer at the revenues and the expenditures on those rec programs. And if they balance out, then then we wouldn't recommend them being cut. But the the other thing, you know, I just want to point out is that the challenge will be if this gets lifted, let's say, May 15th, because that's the latest order. Uh, we may have a challenge even pulling some of these programs together with the, you know, with staffing and everything on a short timeframe.
Yeah, James, that was kind of my question is just that if we're making decisions based on this, it's kind of like, all right, event coordinator. Well, are there events that they're not doing that we they don't need to coordinate? Or are there events that are still going to need to go on? And I don't know if we, I don't know if we know the answers to that kind of question.
I I think at this stage, James, the most direction we can give you is you have the authority and uh don't spend anything that you don't think is in the uh, you know, public safety category. You mean, we don't want you to skimp in that area if at all possible. The the dilemma that we're going to be faced with is we're going to, we know we're going to lose revenues. We're just not sure how many, how much and for how long. But then the thing that makes it even more difficult is the cash flow. When you have the governor deciding that he's not going to distribute sales tax or the county might uh reduce the penalties on property tax late payments. Uh, we're being asked to do things on the TOT. All of those things are going to kill cash flow. At the same time, we're going to be losing revenue. So we're really not in a position to, we could talk about all these line items, but I think we should have you use your best judgment to say if we don't have to spend it, now is a good time not to spend it until we get a handle on if, assuming that we do get a handle on it in the next couple of months, as to what's happening to our cash flow. We know we have enough money in the surplus, even though it's or the the reserves, uh, which is, they're inadequate, they may be, but for a six-month period, we are in a position to have kind of a soft landing on the cutbacks, uh, because we may have some draconian cuts that we don't want to it's hard to contemplate right now, but we're going into a budget cycle. So I I would think that if you have the authority not to do any of these things that in your judgment uh would uh would help the cash flow. Uh, because in some cases, we're just deferring maintenance. I mean, that's the oldest, you know, game in the book. Uh, if you, you still have the expense without the expenditure. So uh, I don't see us going through this line item by line item now. Uh, call a meeting of the uh budget and finance committee, uh, have your finance person, uh, give us the best information or best guess they've got on uh the revenue situation, both in terms of lost revenue and in cash flow. And then we'd be in a position to kind of give you some guidance to bring back to the council uh prior to us going into our annual budget.
Mayor, I have a comment.
Randy?
Um, I agree with everything that you just said. I agree with with the questions that Ryan's asking. I I'm I I think there's one other factor that that's that's gonna have to be um discussed sooner than later. And that's when we start looking at cuts or we start coming to terms with budget come July 1st, that we need to think about how we're going to come out of this recession or how we're going to come out of this pandemic and how we're going to support the community, especially the small business owners um with some form of marketing or some form of help, just reestablishing who we are and what we are and and why you need to come back here. But um, I'm just throwing that out tonight. Um, you know, I have, I have a lot of thoughts on it, but um I'm just saying that along with looking at how we get by, we've got to actually look at um not shooting ourselves in the foot as we come out of this and how we do that um and how we do that in a manner that again, doesn't hurt us um too badly, but also benefits history helps us. So um I'm gonna look for your guidance in that and I'm gonna look for the guidance from the rest of the council, but uh, we need to be thinking about that and and uh, I'm sure I've had conversations with James and and you know, there's other entities in this community that are already thinking about it also. So we just need to put the players together, get them in a conversation and hopefully piggyback on as much as we can and then take a really hard look at other things that we may have to do. So I think that uh, um, a conversation, Ryan, I know you're close with Jamie at the chamber. Um, uh, the N is obviously someone that they don't have an unlimited budget, but they have a huge budget. Uh, so we're gonna, we're gonna have to look at how resourceful we can be as a city because all of these businesses are taking it on the chin. And there's not going to be any surplus of money in their accounts to figure out how to market their way back into the real world. So that's a concern that I have, and I think it's something that we need to be looking into down the road.
I I will just pass along, uh, Jamie did tell me today, I think his understanding is the end is kind of look at the same thing that when Ojai opens back up, I think they've allocated uh uh more than more than normal amount of a marketing budget for when they come out, but I don't know any specifics. But Jamie did seem to think that they were looking at about the same timeline. It sounds like all of us are. They're not totally sure, but they're getting ready to um, when that day comes, be ready for it and and make sure everybody knows. At least they're open, which inherently means Ojai's open, assuming we can get all the right pieces and health, safety issues in place to get that to happen.
Right.
Okay, James, what do you need?
Uh, yeah, I just uh, I wanted to kind of give a status update on what we're looking at and see if there are any concerns. So if if there are none, we'll move forward with the uh budget committee next uh, in the next couple of weeks and uh go from there.
Yeah, James, I appreciate the the list and getting started on it. I don't think I I I don't think it's ever too soon. I think it's too soon to make the decisions, but at least we're working off a list and there's some idea. If, you know, things change so quickly, it it's not too early to plan anything in this current environment. Everything I've planned a week out has changed five times in seven days, right? So I I think that at least having something on paper, it may change dramatically, but I I do appreciate us at least having that conversation now rather than being up against the wall when we need to later.
Thank you. Appreciate.
I have one question. The bottom item where it says legal advertising notices, $500. Is that in the Ojai Valley News?
Yes, uh, yes, and we have a uh, we have a budget for it. This was a budget for a specific project that is not moving forward. So so.
Because I don't want to take anything, Ojai Valley News desperately needs our support and we need their community involvement. So, yeah.
Yeah, this was for one specific project that we don't need to notice.
Okay.
Okay, uh, number four, moratorium on commercial evictions.
So this item, um, uh, we had started to draft a commercial eviction moratorium. Uh, you may recall, we did implement a residential eviction moratorium uh when we declared the emergency. Uh, the immediate concern was making sure that people didn't lose their homes uh due to the coronavirus. Uh, we started to draft this commercial eviction moratorium. Recently, um, the state uh, and and the city attorney could probably speak to this better than I can, but the state uh put in place its own uh moratorium. Uh, so some people would say that that eliminated the need for the city to uh to put one in place, but we drafted, we had drafted one that had some specific um language that went a little further than the state, so we wanted to bring it forward. And with that, I'll let the the city attorney explain the difference between the states and what we're proposing.
Sure. Briefly, the state's orders that were adopted by the judicial council and the governor effectively together prohibit initiating any new eviction lawsuit. effectively together prohibit initiating any new eviction lawsuit. They, state's orders also prohibit any judicial foreclosure from being initiated. Uh, note that many of the foreclosures in California are non judicial and those can still go forward, but the outcome of the non judicial foreclosure is a sale on the courthouse or the use of the courthouse steps. And that then turns into an eviction action and that eviction action can't go forward right now. The governor, the state orders expire 90 days after the governor ends the emergency declaration. And they have an exception for an eviction necessary for health and safety reasons. The local foreclosure moratorium on the table, if adopted, would add two delta points. The first would be to give commercial tenants up to six months to pay the back rent. The state's orders prohibit an eviction, but they do not give a tenant a break on the current rent due. The proposed local order would give tenants, both the commercial tenants and then of course existing residential tenants have it as well, up to six months to pay back rent during the present period, six months counting from the end of the local emergency period, if they qualify as a tenant who's had financial difficulties due to the COVID pandemic. The, um, proposed local commercial moratorium would also stop the process earlier. The state doesn't prohibit, uh, demand letters or collections actions or other actions short of a lawsuit to accomplish an eviction. The local proposed order would prohibit a landlord from initiating an eviction, including any of the preparatory steps. So it would give some, give tenants, uh, some further protection beyond that which the state has, has baked in. Whether to adopt one or not is a policy choice. And in all cases, uh, tenants remain obligated to pay the rent that's owed. The question is, when do they have to pay? Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
No penalties, right?
Correct. This would be up to six months to pay after the close of the emergency without penalties or rent or, um, late penalty.
Yeah, Matt, without, Matt, I think that the ordinance and I think the law includes, right? No, uh, penalty fees. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, uh, Matt, Mayor?
Yeah, Bill, just a second. I was, I didn't catch that last part. Uh, Matt, the law that is, or the edict from the governor, uh, does that also waive the penalty percentage?
Uh, no, the governor's edict does not, nor does the state. It would be the local orders that could do so.
Yeah, sorry, Johnny. Our local order that was drafted had it. The, the, I don't think the state.
Do what?
The local ordinance that was drafted by Jay, by Matt, does have a restriction on, um, late fees, penalty fees or anything like that. I, state rules, I don't believe have any limitation on that.
Yeah, okay. That's what Matt said. Okay.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Do we have the authority to be, uh, or is this preempted by the governor now?
We have the authority to go further than the governor. His order did not block further local actions. He, he set a floor, we can go beyond.
And, and Matt, you may want to, Thousand Oaks did do this. There's a couple other communities. I don't know, Matt, James, you guys may know more, but you may, there are, there are some other cities that have done this. And I will tell you, I have a commercial client in Thousand Oaks who has a franchise business that is a type of franchise that would not be allowed here. But he has, uh, we've already utilized the Thousand Oaks moratorium and followed their rules to prevent him from being evicted under this, uh, same type of ordinance.
Yeah, I don't have a complete list of the cities, but a number of them around, it's something I've only have adopted similar measures. So to have most of the largest cities in the Bay Area.
Um, Mayor, I, I, uh, I have a question.
The, 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 the 10% penalty, uh, comes about, what in, uh, state statute for, for, uh, failure to pay on time? Or is this all?
The, the 10%, uh, there's no state minimum penalty for a lease payment. That would be something to be baked into a lease, but we can block.
So I'm just wondering how we as a local government have the authority to, uh, take that away from the, the, uh, property owner. Uh, it seems like that's a sort of a civil business matter that either is the, uh, moratorium by the governor. Uh, okay. Well, you're saying that people are complying with it, I guess.
And the, the authority lies in the emergency declarations. We found if so approved, the finding would be that adopting the type of moratorium is necessary to help cities' response to the emergency. That would get us, uh, past the standard civil rules. We couldn't, probably couldn't do this in a regular case, but we could do it under the emergency declarations.
Is there any case law, Matt, on something like this? Or are we just sort of deciding that's a, it's goodwill and we'll try to get away with it?
Um, I'm not sure if the eviction moratorium at the commercial level has directly been tested. Residential eviction moratoriums have been tested in the context of fires under emergency declarations and those have been upheld.
Right, okay. Do any of a motion here from anybody?
I think we have a couple more questions, Mayor.
Mayor, I'd like to just comment. My, my thinking has evolved on this. I was tending to be, uh, sympathetic with it, but after the actions of the judicial council and the governor, uh, at this point, the reality of the business situation, uh, and I'm looking at this from both sides right now, uh, is that anybody, any, any property owner in their right mind is sitting down and having a discussion with their tenants, their commercial tenants, because nobody wants vacancy at this point.
Right.
Yeah. But I'm worried that if we pass something like this, it'll kind of get in the way of those kinds of productive negotiations. And frankly, there are tenants out there that are already looking to game the system and not discuss in good faith, uh, between, uh, the property owners and the, um, and the tenants. And remember, property owners got to make mortgage payments and they got to pay pro- property taxes and everything else. So.
Yeah, that's why I was skeptical.
I'm thinking it's, uh, maybe we, we, I, I, my thinking has kind of evolved and, and just kind of let what the state's done be, uh, suffice in the commercial realm right now.
Well, just for clarification, I believe that more, there's a moratorium on foreclosures as well. So if any landlord doesn't pay their mortgage, they cannot be foreclosed on either.
Yeah, I think, and what do you think that's going to do when you have to refinance, Ryan?
Well, before.
I'm just saying for clarification, I just thought that the, the process isn't, the state didn't just pause the process on the tenant and they paused it on the landlord mortgage end too. That's.
Only, only to a certain extent though. The judicial council's orders blocked judicial foreclosure. Non judicial foreclosure is not blocked, but you can't get an eviction in the end. So even you could accomplish a sale, sell the property out from under the owner, but then you couldn't evict whoever was actually there.
It's not forbearance.
So, Mayor?
Yeah, Randy?
And in, in the same, in the same thinking, I'm just looking at the domino effect of, um, creating an environment that's going to prolong this, um, pandemic recession. And that is if we give someone six months after this is declared over, um, we're prolonging, um, to me, and that's why I, why I'm calling it a domino effect. We're, we're going to prolong this recession in the fact that now everyone is be, is going to be given a six month moratorium to, to start paying, um, on these commercial properties. That's my concern. And, 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 and when what Bill said is, again, these commercial owners have other obligation, you know, have the primary obligation, which is, you know, paying for the building if they don't own it, paying the taxes on the building, whether they own it or not. But so this to me is we're just pushing something down the road. If the state has something in place personally, I would see, I would, again, I would agree that we do what the state's doing. And if we wanted to do something differently, instead of six months, maybe we take it 90 days, which coincides with what the, um, state is saying. Am I correct, Matt?
The state allows, doesn't allow.
Ninety days after.
But it does allow 90 days after, uh, the governor ends the state emergency is when eviction lawsuits can restart.
Right. So again, alls I'm trying to say is if we wanted to monetize this in some ways, I'd be willing to go to that 90 day period, but six months is a long time.
That would be just the start, but you know, it would take months after that for the, uh, judicial actions to actually be concluded.
James, what are, James, do you know, uh, Matt, Matt didn't have, um, a ton of information on other cities. James, do you have any other information on what other cities like Thousand Oaks have?
Yeah. Yeah. Um, so I know actually several cities within the, uh, county have, have actually done this, not just Thousand Oaks. They actually was the most recent. Um, I think, I think Oxnard and Ventura both did it too, but we can confirm that. But, um, but their orders were more in line, if I recall, with the state's order, but they just, they had done it before the state did it. So it's, uh, it's, ours is a, is a little different in the six month, uh, forgiveness period.
Well, let me, let me say this. One, um, I, I, I agree that there is a issue with the potential of non-good faith using this. Like I guess I could hold on to all my rent for nine months and put it into CD, make money and then pay you, pay my landlord at the end on the last day possible and get away with that. But I'm, I, there, there's a lot, there is always a lot of pressure on the renter, the commercial renters in the arcade especially, which makes up a significant portion of the local commercial environment here. Um, I mean, I'm not going to not pay my landlord for six months commercially to deal with any of this, but I'm really worried about all the stress and we not knowing right now how this is going to play out on how long the county is going to, or, or anyone is going to, how long it's going to take to open back up what we consider the local economy here, which is essentially giving full breadth to the hotels to have full volume so that that can trickle down into the local businesses in the arcade. And I'm not totally convinced that there may not be a timeline where this emergency crisis isn't terminated officially, but there's still the, this residue of effect that lasts easily six months. I mean, earlier in this dialogue, like Randy, you were saying, which I, I agree with, I think we, we're opening back up by June 1st, but I think it's a long time before we're back to normal. So that, that there's a big delta between back to normal and opened back up. And I see that being where you can't pay the normal rent you used to. I'm hopeful that.
Ryan, anybody in their right mind is gonna, any landlord in their right mind is going to work with the tenants on this.
Well, that, I agree.
I'll tell you what, I'm.
Let me finish, let me finish. I also hope that the extra time is where any tenant and any landlord would go, okay, now we're out of this. Now we have a couple bucks under us. What can we figure out? Either to negotiate a longer term lease, you know, if you're paying, if you're paying 1,500 a month, you pay thousand for three months, you pay 2,000 for the back three months, you end it all equalized. It's just that it's, it's about the timeline to get out of that. I don't know what the right answer is. I'm, three months isn't totally off the radar for me. I just want to make sure that, uh, I'm, I'm very concerned. I probably hear more about it than everybody else. So maybe that's just me, but commercial tenants in the arcade and in Ojai, over the last couple of years have been getting a lot of squeeze on them, um, for, for rent. And they're really concerned. I, 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 I don't know what, you know, it's hard. We, this is not like there's a playbook to answer this, but if three months is the right amount instead of six months, and that works, I'm okay. But I, I would like us to, to be on the, we have, you know, these aren't the, the Walmarts of the world and the big box stores are going to figure it out. They can borrow money. They can go to corporate, their franchises, the franchise, corporate franchise is going to pump money in there to make sure they're still staying alive and they can do a lot of things.
Ryan, that's not happening all the time. I can.
Okay, guys, I'm gonna have to, okay, I, I'm putting a motion on the floor. I moved that we, uh, follow the governor's, uh, edict right now and we revisit this later if it appears to be, uh, uh, too narrow. But I think that when this was first discussed, it was, there was nothing locally to help the, uh, commercial, uh, renters. And now we have something. So my motion is, is that we do what the state's doing.
Nice second.
Is there a second to that?
Nice second then.
Okay, is there most, okay, we have a motion in a second.
I, I don't understand what you mean, because the state's not doing anything. The state, actually, the governor ordered something that is inconsistent with what the courts ordered. So I'll be honest, I don't know what you mean.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't know.
I'm saying we're going to do, follow the lead of the governor.
No, but.
Governor's lead is that there is nothing in place. The courts put this in place. The governor did not issue a commercial moratorium. The courts have not allowed you to be able to process a commercial moratorium. So going with what the governor said means we don't pass anything.
Yeah, and I, I need to.
Yeah, right. But it means that we did, we follow what the state is doing, which is.
No, no, but you said follow what the governor is doing and the, the judicial council, the state of California is not the governor's order. I'm not trying to parse words or be a pain in the rear end, but Johnny, I'm telling you, the judicial council of California's order is not consistent, arguably with what the governor's order was. So if you want to make a motion that says we do what the governor said, I, I, I cannot say that that is the same as what the judicial council has.
Okay, well, you don't have to. Okay, uh, Bill?
I don't even think the city attorney's opinion is, I think that, I think Matt agrees with me that there was a little bit of difference between those two as well.
I understood the motion made by the mayor to be not adopting anything local and allowing the state's collective orders to apply. As noted.
Stand correctly.
But he did say, he said to do what the governor stated. And if you want to do it, the judicial council stated that.
Okay, I amend my motion.
I, I agree with that.
Right, no, Johnny, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to clarify.
I cannot vote until I'm crystal clear on the fundamentals. Okay, there are businesses that are closed. They have no income flow to pay their rent. I want to make sure that they are not evicted. That's, that's my concern. I don't know whether they need three months or six months after this, uh, after we eat, open things up gradually, but I want to see something in place that protects our small business owners so that, I mean, Bill is saying that they can negotiate with the landlord.
And they're getting loans to do this. And it's a very granular situation right now. And my understanding of what Johnny's motion is, is like, we just don't have enough information to know what to do. We can always, if, if a problem develops, revisit this. But right now, there's significant restrictions in a couple of different ways at the state level.
Okay, well, just, uh, just tell me straight. If someone cannot pay their commercial building rent, can a landlord evict them?
Right now?
Not right now.
No.
And the right now lasts until 90 days after the governor ends the state of emergency at the state level. And that was an order adopted by the, by the judicial council, which is an arm of the courts underneath the Supreme Court. The, a resident or.
Do you know a thousand Oaks was six months? I, I saw, do you know a thousand, does anybody know a thousand Oaks was six months? I can look it up.
I believe Thousand Oaks was six months to pay the rent back.
I, I just want, I just want everybody to know, we, we, and, and James, weigh in on this. We might be the only county that, or we might be the only city in the county that does, that doesn't include the six months. And we were the first that did it residentially. And we are the most mom and pop, most at risk, most highest paid percentage of rent in your commercial business that you can't do much about because you're not being able to go to corporate or your franchise or anybody else to help you. And, you know, all these other cities decided to do it. Now, I'm not, not saying we should do everything every other city decided to do, but I do want to make it clear that it's not that we're, we can say we want to follow the state, but by following the state or the judicial council means we are deviating from every other city in the county, probably.
We don't know that.
But can we find out?
Well, I, I mean, I.
The most.
We couldn't hear it from one of our staff members.
But, but that's, we have the action for tonight to decide whether or not we do anything tonight and as we get more information.
So if I could quickly answer the, the question, we, so we have pulled up Thousand Oaks order and Thousand Oaks order did give tenants six months, uh, to pay back rent before they can be evicted. Um, I also see, I don't have the orders in front of me, but I see that Oxnard, Camarillo, Thousand Oaks and Moore Park, it looks like have all, have all adopted their own orders.
And I believe.
I'm not sure if Silmar or Santa Paula have. Those are the two I have questions about.
Or Ventura?
Yeah, Ventura's not on the list. I have, I thought they were, but it's Camarillo. It's like.
You realize the judicial council is functionally six months.
Mayor?
Yeah, Randy?
I've just, um, this would be my two cents.
Well, wait, well, hold on, hold on a second. Grant, Bill just made a comment that I think is completely wrong. So Bill.
We'll come back to that. We'll, Ryan, we'll come back.
You know, Bill did, that's okay. Bill didn't have the floor. Um, so, uh, alls I'm trying to say is to me, and, and I'm as, as concerned as everyone. In fact, in fact, I know everyone on this council is. Okay. So we got to be, we got to be abundantly clear on that. To me, the most important thing is a small businessman in this environment is that you get prepared, you get your PPP in order, and that there are financial remedies out there for small businesses. And, and it just behooves these small business owners to look inward and to help themselves try and solve this problem. That's, I know, there's no guarantee.
PPP doesn't cover any rent. It only covers paycheck protection. It's a.
Ryan, that is not true. That is not true.
My understanding.
Yes, but that's, that's not true.
Let's say it's not accurate. We don't know.
Mayor?
I am applying for every different loan there possibly is.
Ryan, that's not with the.
Two seminars on it.
Bill, let Ryan speak.
True.
Wait, 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 Randy has the floor.
I thought you were done, Randy.
Well, I'm just trying to say that, watch, we, we could argue this point endlessly. I think what, I think what I'm just trying to say is, if everyone reads, and I'm doing a tremendous amount of reading on these PPPs. Um, and again, it's not the short term, it's the long term. It's, it's how I'm gonna conduct business three months, six months from now, not today. And alls I'm trying to say is, my interpretation is that you can write your rent off. You can account for your salaries. You can obviously do your payroll. So instead of us arguing that point, and that's why we really can't make a clear concise motion tonight as to three months, six months or whatever. Let's let this stand. Let's let more people figure this out. And as people come forward, we can readdress this.
Okay, got it. Ryan, your turn.
I, I, I appreciate the comment and I completely disagree. The paycheck protection program only gives you eligibility for loans up into, up to the amount of your payroll. It can give you eligibility for other ones which are not coming out. The SBA loan program, which is different than the PPP, has now been, I, I, everybody's getting emails about it that says you're getting a thousand dollars for each employee you have. They don't, they're not engaged in trying to protect the loan situation. The governments cha, the governments, the, the judicial council stalling.
Let Ryan finish, please. Bill, let Ryan finish.
The legislation itself.
Bill, let Ryan finish and then you can talk.
It's just not accurate.
Yeah, okay, you can tell him that.
No, if you can tell me anything that's accurate about the paycheck protection program right now, after they just sent emails out the last two days saying they changed the entire program, they don't know when it's gonna roll out. I just got off the phone with Jamie Fleming, who just got done telling me everybody is freaked out. What they thought they were promised they're not gonna get, and they're very concerned. We have a very high-risk, high-rent population that don't have any ability to lend funds to. And if they can get them through the SBA, bless their heart. If they can get it through an insurance claim for a shutdown, bless their heart. It doesn't change that they're gonna have to pay the rent. It just gives them an extension which arguably may continue into the months where we are back to some semblance of nearly a hundred percent capacity. Maybe even the Christmas time season, maybe outside of the summer where we don't know whether we're going to be shut down almost completely to be able to get their feet underneath them. That, the idea is that we take the large problem that is going to come from cash flow and move it up the chain rather than down the chain. And by that, I mean, rather than it land on the individual, the tenant, it goes up from the tenant to the landlord to the bank, who the government is saying can't do anything, is gonna be delayed in what they can do on their end. And I'm trying to give our tenants in our commercial businesses the protection for having enough time not to be able to not pay the rent, not to be able to get a freebie, but to be able to get into the important months with, the way our seasonal businesses work here, to be able to get their feet underneath them.
Yeah, okay, Bill, your, Bill's turn now.
No, I, I, I think I've, I've probably got a little out of hand and I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add one fact point?
Certainly.
Thank you. I did confirm that Ventura has also adopted a residential and commercial comprehensive moratorium. That includes a six-month payment plan. I can't get information on Santa Paula or Fillmore, at least not in this.
I mean, are we really gonna be the one community with a mask restriction and not a commercial eviction restriction? I, I'm just saying that it doesn't.
That would make us unique.
Most at-risk community for both in my mind.
I just wanna express my full support for what Ryan is pointing out. Thank you, Ryan.
We're talking about.
Well, we have a motion in a second.
For landlords and, and tenants to hopefully renegotiate. And I will tell you, I have a, I have a tenant in Thousand Oaks under this exact thing. And I am trying right now, as soon as we can, to renegotiate the backend of this. But if, but we don't know. The hard part is, we don't know when the emergency will stop and the restrictions will continue. Because we could have, we could have social, physical distancing for six, eight, twelve months after the emergency's lifted, and we're nowhere near normal economic capacity, but we're back to some legal normality for evictions.
I, I think that it's foolish that we don't do what most, the majority of cities in Ventura County are doing. I, I think that it just seems foolish to me.
Well, we'd, we'd be sprinkled, bring uh, room additions over ten, a thousand square feet if we followed everything, which I agree with you on. I like to be uniform with the rest of the county. But, okay, should we go ahead and vote on the motion or is there an amendment to the motion? Okay, let's vote on it. Uh, we have someone to call the role.
Well, can you re, I'm sorry, Johnny, I don't know. Is the, was the motion, uh, the motion, I'm sorry, the motion was for essentially what the judicial council's doing with the three months after the close of the emergency. That's it instead of.
For now, to let the, the states, uh, the state and the judiciary is part of the state, uh, that, to let them do what they've done and, and then we can revisit this thing next month. Uh, if we still have everything closed down, maybe we know a little more.
Okay.
But go ahead and do a vote. Councilmember Wirick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
No.
Mayor Protem Blatz?
No, I believe it should be longer than three months.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes. We can bring it back up in a month or so. And uh, if we're not helping our locals as much as we need to, then we could do it then. Okay, motion passed. Next item. Uh, item number six. No, item number five?
Five.
Yeah, transient occupancy deferment request. James?
Yeah, so this um, is a, uh, as everybody note, is aware, we, uh, we collect tax on every person that stays in a hotel within the city of Ojai. The guests at the hotel submits a ten percent tax that the hotel then takes and then transfers to the city. Um, and uh, obviously, the um, or, uh, the, well, let me go back one second and say that. Um, with the declaration of the emergency in March, uh, the hotels had collected TOT in February that would have been sent to the city on March thirty first. Uh, but the, um, this issue arose when uh, after the declaration of an emergency in, in mid-March, uh, I was contacted by hotels within the city requesting a suspension of the TOT collection. Um, uh, and, and they have requested um, a, uh, an extension to the timeline for the, for the, uh, the middle of the TOT. Uh, as noted in the staff report, when the initial request came in on March twenty-third, we were ten days into the, uh, the public health emergency. Um, things changed very quickly, but on March twenty-third, we denied, uh, the request. I, I denied the request, um, uh, as, uh, we didn't, uh, feel that it was necessary at that time. Uh, the positive news that I will, um, will give at this time is that at this, uh, in the staff report, it notes that ten of the twelve locations have submitted that February payment by March thirty-first. I have actually heard that, uh, that we've received the eleventh location as well. So at this time, just one location hasn't submitted payment. So, so the original request, which was for that February payment, um, is maybe not, uh, as critical now that only one hotel remains, um, uh, having not paid it. But I think that, uh, the question is likely to come up again with the March payment, which will be due April thirtieth. Um, so, uh, council at the last meeting indicated that, uh, a desire to discuss this matter and, um, and have a public discussion about it. So it's on the agenda for that reason. Uh, I have checked with other cities in the county. No other city in the county is planning to do any sort of, uh, TOT relief. Um, they all note the arguments that we've made about, um, it being submitted by the guest to the hotel simply to be transmitted and, and, and so that shouldn't be affected by, um, by this. Because essentially, if somebody is not, uh, collecting, if somebody's not staying at the hotel, they're not collecting the tax and they don't have to pay the tax. But, uh, as I've, um, that said recently, several other cities outside of the county, or a few other cities outside of the county, including Goleta, have recently issued time extensions. So, uh, like, like everything else we're finding with the coronavirus, that it's, the answer seems to be never say never. So something that no city was willing to do months ago, now some cities are starting to do. So it's on the agenda for our, for our discussion. Um, I guess the two remaining questions are whether, uh, that remaining, the one hotel that hasn't submitted for March because it was on the agenda, whether there should be a, uh, a time extension for them to submit without penalty. And also whether we want to make any adjustment for the, um, payment due April thirtieth.
Mayor, I'd allow Ryan to have the floor. It was, this was his issue. I, I seconded for the discussion. But I'd like to hear more of Ryan's concerns.
Well, I will say this. I, I believe that I, when I brought this up, we weren't sure what the April, um, timeliness of payments were. But if I'm understanding correctly, James, all the payments except one have been made timely. So Randy, to make this even more weird, because I know who I believe the one is, I'm gonna recuse myself from this issue because I represent the party that's left paying, who hasn't paid, I believe. And, um, it has absolutely nothing to do with, uh, this situation. Um, but as far as it moving forward on a whole, um, I, I don't have a problem moving forward on it. And I, I think it's appropriate that, um, we, whatever, I mean, I, if moving forward, there's an extension, I'm happy to discuss that. But I don't wanna comment or be involved in, uh, discussing this with it being just a one. With this being an issue with just one hotel at this point that I represent, I don't think it would be appropriate for me to comment anywhere.
Okay, should we then go to the next step then? Which is to discuss what other possibilities there are going forward that, uh, make sense?
Mayor, can I, can I ask, um, um, James or, or Matt one question?
Sure.
It's a simple one. Whose money is it that the hotelers are collecting and passing it through to the city? Whose is it? Is it theirs or is it ours?
By law, the money that's collected from, by a hotel operator from a guest for the TOT belongs to the city and thus to the taxpayers. They hold it in trust and have, have an obligation to pay it to the city when due unless the council defers that obligation.
So to me, the question is, I think, I think originally the question was what were we gonna do with past monies owed? And I think the argument. I mean, at that time, they're, they're the cities. I think the next question to be discussed, and I think, Ryan, you should include yourself in it, is do we wanna put a moratorium on the new TOT, um, uh, that we voted in up to fifteen percent? Or do we wanna keep it at ten to help hotelers as they come out of this, um, recession? Um, and waive the five percent that we increased it. That, to me, is the discussion tonight. At least that's where I'm, that's where I believe it's at. Unless someone wants to correct me.
Well, I will say this, Randy. I, I agree. What I will, I think there may be a discussion that's necessary for whether or not, if there's only one hotel that hasn't paid, whether or not they pay a late fee or not. But I don't think it's appropriate for me to be a part of. But I think that there may be, need to be a discussion with that. Moving forward, that, you know, I agree, you know, Randy, that's really what I was thinking about when I first thought of this issue. And it's really difficult. I, I, I don't know, I don't know if, like, reducing it by a third from fifteen to ten makes any difference because they, they're, you know, the P, the, the patrons are paying it. Um, and I don't know if we're collecting enough TOT to make a difference right now, right? I mean, we're projecting it at almost zero. So you know, if we change it from ten to fifteen for, you know, and they had to pay it back in a couple of months, I don't know if it would make more than a couple hundred or thousand dollars difference. And I, the thing I'm worried about, I'm always concerned about this, uh, just like I think all the small business owners are, that we, and especially lawyers, we hold money in trust a lot. The state of California requires attorneys to have a separate trust account where we put, you know, even if you make a deposit, I have to put it in a separate account. And then as I do the work, I pull it out of that account and put it in a different account. Um, anytime you allow people to hold money in trust that they could do something not purely paying what they're supposed to for, leaves the opportunity for it to be misappropriated. So I don't love the idea ever of money coming from a patron through anywhere, not getting to who it's supposed to be paid. Because as, as Matt said, it is held in trust. Now, if delaying that is important because of a situation, then that makes sense, right? You can't necessarily do the bookkeeping because something happened. But I'm against any situation where we would make it easier for anyone to use the TOT money to pay for other things, because that leaves us up to a lot of opportunity for the money that's being held in trust not getting to who it's being held in trust for, which is us, the city. Um, now, a couple of weeks here or there, as things need to happen because of the situation, makes sense. I don't mind ever not paying a penalty fee because of a late fee. I don't have a problem with, uh, other, those types of things. But principally, I don't think we should lessen the amount so that it's not paid in full. But I think we should always be flexible in when we get paid it, as long as it is paid in full.
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to be recognized the purpose of a motion, if that be in order?
It's in order.
Uh, I would like to make a motion that we, uh, not defer payment on TOT, but waive the late penalties for the current cycle only.
I'll second that.
Okay, move to second to buy the current cycle. You're speaking of the money's already paid and being.
No, I mean, I mean, the current cycle of, of not paid yet.
You mean, you mean owed, owed, uh, April first bill? Or do you mean that will be owed May first? Or do you mean both?
I, I, I mean that, I mean the, uh, we, we have one, uh, one hotel that was wondering about, uh, the actions tonight. I wouldn't wanna penalize them and, and then, and there's an uncertainty. So I would say the, the next due date is April one, right?
Uh, April thirtieth.
It is April thirtieth.
Okay.
Yeah.
My motion would be to waive penalties up to and no further than the April thirty bill, billing.
Okay.
So wait, uh, I wanna make sure I had it said, waive the one person, the one person who is waiting for this discussion from March thirty first. And then, and then, um, waive a penalty for the, the hotels for the April thirtieth deadline, but no further than that at this time.
Right. I, I'm thinking there's gonna be a lot more uncertainty this, right now. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, let's accommodate that uncertainty and that's my motion.
And if, if I can add one thing, because I, I, I had a meeting with the hotel groups, uh, last week and I told them, I told them that, you know, we rely on the funding and it's critical, but they, they all, uh, multiple of them said that the issue for them is cash flow and, uh, that this hit everybody by surprise. So I told them that I'd pass that message on.
Yeah, understand, I mean, understandable. It's just that, look, there's certain things. I think this council and every one of us would do anything we could to help cash flow, as long as it's not money that should not be appropriately changed in the flow.
Agreed.
This is that problem, right? That's, this is money held in trust. And, um, the penalty part, you know, I, the, I, i- if, now, I don't know, moving forward, um, Bill, as part of your motion, and I, I don't mean to make it more complicated, would it be to e- extend, um, for what's owed on May, or I'm sorry, April thirtieth or May first, whatever date it is? Would we, would we be waiving any late fee for that? Or would we just decide that later, uh, as is needed?
My, my motion is meant to, to waive penalties for payments due up to and, and no later than April thirtieth, and then we can revisit later.
Okay, that makes sense. And I, and I wanna make clear, I think, and I think, Bill, if you agree, that's about there being a, you know, having a hard time getting the books done in time. This is not an idea that, hey, float your cash flow with our money for an extra couple of weeks. This is us saying, look, there's stay-at-home orders that maybe, it may take a couple of extra weeks to get the books done so you can pay it on time.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I completely agree with that.
Okay, we ready for a vote?
Yeah, Mayor, real quick, I just wanted to just add, as, as long as that, I'm glad that was clarified because, uh, again, I'm gonna, you know, I'm a small business owner, um, as most of you. And, um, and, and to me, that seems to be the only reason to delay this is the fact that they're into having a difficulty getting their books in order. Um, essentially, I used to set aside payroll taxes and put it into a specific account and pay my quarterlies. Now I do payroll on a weekly basis and I do all of my payroll taxes and all my deducts on a weekly basis. And I have it done by a service. So I can, I can understand that, that logic now of, yeah, you know what, I might, I may not be able to do it this week or the second week. I could probably get to it the third week in trying to waive the penalty. But to me, the bottom line is that is not their money. And so, and, and I appreciate the term trust. But, but I'm, but I, I just wanna be clear. It's, I'm sorry, it's not their money, like the payroll taxes that are deducted are not my money. So.
Okay, are we ready for a vote?
Randy, I can tell you. I can tell you, the state bar does not care whether I need the money or not. If I pull it out of that trust account and spend it on rent, I am, I'm in a world of hurt. So I agree with that completely. Anyway, sorry, Johnny, go ahead.
Okay, are we ready for the vote?
Yes.
Okay, this is involves money, so I guess we need a roll call.
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
And Mayor Proton Blatz, are you recusing yourself?
No, no, no. On this part, I am voting yes.
Okay. And your vote is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. And Gail, I tried to make that as complicated as possible for you. Glad you're keeping pace.
Good job.
You did, you did a really good job, Ryan, too.
Thank you, Johnny. Thank you. Yes, I appreciate it.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Larry, on item number six? And the Casitas Municipal Water District's well project to replace a well. James?
Yeah, and we have, we have Mike Flood on the, from the Casitas Water District on the line. So he, he will be, be joined with us in case there's any questions. But in short, this item is a request from Casitas Water District to construct a replacement water well with reduced capacity. It's replacing mutual well number five. The the city does have a moratorium currently, but it doesn't apply to the, the public wells. It's for private wells, so it doesn't apply here. O B G M A issued a permit at its second to the last meeting for this well. And so we have it on the agenda today to show permit. We have both Mike Flood on the call and the Public Works Director. The well are with that. I'll leave it, leave it there. And if there's any questions, we can have Mike Flood.
Okay, well, while we start with a motion, I'll make it, let's approve the permits and application. Is there a second?
I will second that if I'm.
Okay, discussion.
And I will just say this real quick, Johnny. I, I just want everyone to know, I, I subbed for Johnny at O B G M A the day that O B G M A approved this. This has been approved by O B G M A. I've had substantial conversations with Richard Hages about it. I was there for the presentation of Mike Flood and I can't remember. Sorry, if Mike, you can hear me, I can't remember the other woman, what's her name who made the presentation at O B G M A?
Yeah, that was their engineering manager, Julia Aranda.
Julia, thank you. I couldn't remember. And I asked a, I grilled them with a number of questions, but I will leave our council with this. The one thing that's pretty cool about this situation is not only we're two Ojai Flow members voting on approving this well, which we spent a lot of time arguing with a lot of people and fighting for local control. That's very local control. But I literally litigated and argued with, with the California Public Utility Commission over mutual five and six that replaced it originally. I just want to say, I asked a lot of questions. I won't make Mike have to answer them all again. And Julia answered a lot of them as well. Grilled them. I am in complete support of this and already voted for it on O B G M A. So there you go.
Okay. I have two quick questions for Mr. Floodite, probably.
Go, Bill.
How many, what cubic feet per second are we talking about in the replacement well? And will the existing well be capped or abandoned?
The existing well, we'll take a look at it. And right now it's near collapse. So what we would do is hold that in reserve in case we had problems with, with something else. But right now, that, that well is, is putting out very little flow right now. The new well, we would expect somewhere around 300 GPM.
Okay, thank you.
Gallons per minute.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Bill, that's a great question. You know, it's funny for like five years that I asked that question. They, it's funny with wells, even if you don't use them, you keep them as backup just in case you do. And I think that's going to be what mutual five ends up to. So if we end up with a catastrophic situation or something weird, five may still be there. Like if there's a fire or something strange, still be there for some capacity.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I had, I had a question.
Randy.
Regarding the well capacity, it states here that the well is going to be at providing less capacity. So my question to Mike is why would you want to put a million plus dollars into a well and either not meet or exceed the existing flows? I'm a little lost on that.
Well, the, I think what you see in there is what the original capacity was in that well was drilled in 1951. And as you probably know, the, the well capacity is definitely dependent on the aquifer. And this particular aquifer, I mean, there's big changes in level. And whatever your level is, really, really drives what, what you can get out of it. So I say 300 GPM because that is what we're seeing with the other wells we have there. It's kind of a, a limit that the aquifer is providing. So we're, we definitely like more than 300. But I'm really, being realistic, I think that, that will, even if, even with a full aquifer, you're not going to see much more than 300 GPM out of that well.
Okay, right.
All right. Before I ask, I'm going to ask Mike just a couple of questions to, to just put a couple of things on the record, but I wanted to make sure nobody else had any questions first. All right. Mike, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions. I probably already know the answer to, but I've had these questions from constituents. So I want to make sure, and these are kind of a little bit of focus on old, you know, Golden State Water style questions. So number one is, will this new well increase the capacity so Casitas can sell water to anyone outside of the Casita system or to individuals that otherwise wouldn't have gotten Casitas water from the Casita system?
Um, okay, I, I'm hoping I understand your question.
I'm going to rephrase it.
Your question is, if your question is, will we pump water out of the basin to serve other people outside the basin? The answer to that is no. Also, the way that the Ojai Water System can currently configured, we can only serve the Ojai Water System with those wells. We don't have the ability to pump back into the Casita system right now.
Mike, I think you actually answered, I think you answered the question much better than I asked the question. So that was it. You cannot, none of the water coming out of this new well means that there's going to be additional water pulled out of the aquifer that can be sold either back to current Casitas customers who are not in the former Golden State system. This is just about adding capacity to what is the system inside the system that is the former Golden State system, correct?
That, that is correct. And I think probably many of you know that one of our goals is to get that well filled up to its former capacity when it was newer. So we can serve nearly all the needs of the Ojai Water System with, with that local groundwater. Because right now roughly about 20% comes from, from Lake Casita every year.
Thank you. Well, Mike, that was giving me my next question. Now, now, the, now currently, now, just to make sure everybody knows, the current split roughly between water that goes into the Ojai system, that is the former Golden State system, is about 80% water from the mutual well system, the various mutual wells, and about 20% from the lake currently, correct?
Right, so right in that neighborhood, correct.
And, and when it, now, I don't need you to answer this, but under Golden State Water, it was about one third, two thirds, it was about 66% to 33%. But even though we are using more water out of the mutual well system for the Ojai system, adding another well does not mean that Casitas is either going to add more capacity or exceed the 80, 20 split that they're roughly at right now exponentially, exceptionally, or they're not trying to sell water outside of the Casitas district, correct?
That, that is correct. Yeah, we'll be pushing to get more than 80%. But keep in mind, O B G M A will be monitoring our, our pumping every quarter. And we pay also a fee for that, for them to monitor that. And if there's an issue with the basin, you know, they can come in and, and change the way people are pumping here. So I think they have good, there's good oversight here locally on, on how pumping is done.
Thank you, Mike. And I will say this as well, lastly, and yes, Randy, you weren't kidding. It's a million dollars or a little bit plus for a well. But the mutual well this was replacing when the final costs were done with Golden State Water was three point, I think, $7 million.
If they want it rate based with no benefit to the rate payer.
We, we've not only, we've, we've not only paid it, we paid full price for the previous well. And now we are, we have, we have raised the money so that our rates will not increase because of the creation of this well, because it's coming out of community facilities district money that's already procured through property taxes.
I'm talking about what Golden State was doing.
Yeah, no, I just, absolutely, Bill, and thank you.
Okay, are we ready for a vote? I am.
I'm all done, I promise.
Mayor, I had one more question to Mike, and it's regarding, you know, this issue is, is brought up on a regular basis, and that's the flow to fire hydrants in our community. Mike, do you, you may not be able to answer that, this question right now, but do you see this enhancing the ability to to get the proper flows to our fire hydrants in the areas of the community that are lacking that flow and that pressure? Or is that a bigger infrastructure question that you're working on? And again, to me, how will this enhance that, that infrastructure process?
Well, it certainly will provide additional supply, local supply. So in the water business, you know, redundancy is, is really key. But yeah, I would say this, this would not address the, some of the endemic, you know, infrastructure problems you mentioned. As far as going to what you would consider the current standard, the new standard, the, the current standard of 1,000 GPM plus, you know, depending on the construction. But I will say this, and I think some of you know, when we are designing new replacement pipelines, we're, we're taking those pipelines to the current standard. So anything new that goes in, we're replacing any four inch mains with six or eight inch mains. So we're addressing those as they come. We did go through and we, we had, there were concerns about fire hydrants not operating. I think there was an incident here on Grand Avenue a number of years ago. And we did put our hands on every single hydrant and ensured they operated. So we, we know that all the hydrants operate. And then we've also been going out and exercising those. You've probably seen the trailer we, we run around with to do that. So we're, we're tending to it. But yeah, it is a bigger infrastructure issue rather than just one well.
Thank you.
Okay, ready for a vote? Do we need a roll call on this matter? Can we do it by acclamation?
Acclamation is fine for this one.
Okay, okay. Any objection to the, the motion? If not, so ordered. Thanks, Mike, for calling in.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Take care now.
Okay, let's go to the last item, which is landscape equipment, business licensing. James?
Thank you. So this item's on the agenda today for a few reasons. One is that the city's prohibition of most gas money goes into effect on April 27th, less than two weeks from today. As a reminder, that prohibits gas, lawn mowers, leaf blowers, lawn edgers, string tremors, trimmers, hedge trimmers, pole hedge trimmers and pole saws. So we have been consistently trying to push that forward. We're sending out information to, we sent out information when it was adopted to the landscape companies announcing it. We've continued to try to create programs to try to get the word out. We've placed ads in the newspaper, including the most recent and the upcoming newspaper announcing this. But if you recall a few, about a month ago, which it's crazy how much changes in a month. I think it was the March 10th meeting. We provided several potential programs that we were going to work on to roll out. And some of those programs are now not possible. The loner program, for example, we were trying to work with the library to develop a loner program. Well, the library is closed right now and, and we haven't been able to move that program forward. However, there are programs, we still think we can move forward. And so our recommendation at this time, assuming that we all want to move forward with the April 27th date, the recommendation is that we issue a business license, our business, business certification to landscaping companies. And how that would work would be pretty simple. We'd reach out to the businesses, the landscaping businesses over the next couple of weeks, schedule an inspection, have our code enforcement officer inspect to ensure that they have gas, or I'm sorry, electric equipment. If they have electric equipment, they'd receive a certification. If they don't have electric equipment, then, then their business license could be suspended or they could be given a, you know, a time, timeframe to, to obtain electric equipment. And so we can move forward with that now with minimal resources and minimal timing. And so that's a recommendation. We also just wanted to bring this forward with everything going on in the April 27th effective date. I wanted to see if there's any feedback or concerns about moving forward. So those are the, the two issues before, before council.
I have a question.
Susan, go.
On the loner program, is, are you saying, what, is there another option besides doing it through the library?
I think the, the, the short answer is there's, we're, we're struggling to figure out a way to make the loner program work during, with the current circumstances. Also, the, the budget that was going to be used for that loner program is not available now due to the budget constraints. And so our recommendation is to focus on the business licensing and the loner program can, can be considered at a later date.
Other questions?
Mayor, I'll, I'll move to approve the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Bill. Second for that? I'll second it. Okay, further discussion?
I have a quick question.
Yeah, Ryan.
James, on, what is, is this, is the delay consistent? I was trying to read through it again, but whatever we're going to do, is this, I mean, haven't, haven't there been a number of city issues that have been continued for kind of a set period of time? Like I know entitlements have a, now they may have come down from the state, but is this essentially the same rough period of time that we're continuing everything else?
Well, so this, we're not recommend, we haven't recommended any continuance, but we wanted to bring it ahead of time in case council wants to discuss that. It's the.
Okay, so two weeks. All right, that's what I was looking for. I couldn't remember. It was two weeks. It wasn't anything longer. So the two weeks thing was just what we were always going to do. That wasn't.
Yeah, so we adopted it on January 28th. It was going into effect on April 27th.
Right.
We're saying we can put it in effect April 27th with this business licensing, our business certification requirement. But, but we don't have the capability at this time to move forward with the loner program under this.
I misunderstood that part when I read it the first time. Yeah, okay.
Okay, other questions?
Yeah, I have a question here. So, you know, I've pushed obviously hard for this as we all have and, and I understand that we've given all of these business entities a two or three month timeframe to actually get this together. My concern is that we're going to go after businesses that are already licensed in Ojai. Whereas I believe the majority of the maintenance operators in our community are unlicensed. So I think addressing the unlicensed operator in conjunction with the licensed operator, it would be something that, that I think that we should move forward with right now. And that we, that we waive during this compliance period, that we waive this two week timeframe for someone to actually purchase a piece of equipment if they don't own it and maybe give them 30 days versus 14. Again, everyone is suffering and everyone is trying to figure out how to work through this new environment. And so I think licensing to me is, is more important in getting a hold on all of the unlicensed operators in our community. And then giving everyone, again, I know some of you may not want to do that, but give these folks another 30 days to actually comply. That's what I'm looking for.
Are you looking?
Someone would like to make their, amend their motion, I'd, I would like to.
14 days to 30?
Yes.
Okay, I'll accept that amendment.
Okay.
So you're saying that they can have two more weeks to use gas powered equipment? Okay, is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is, Suzie, it gives us, um, it gives us an opportunity to have code enforcement actually get unlicensed operators licensed. And while we're doing that, actually do a visual inspection of their equipment, and now notice these people that they have 30 days to comply. So let's get them licensed, and then let's get them in compliance.
Yeah, my dilemma with that is, if ever there was a time to get rid of anything that makes, that pollutes the air and that affects our breathing and the health of our lungs, uh, now is it. So I don't know how many are still using gas powered. I mean, I, I, I don't like the idea that we don't have a loner program, uh, but I don't know what to do about that. I'll probably go along with what you're suggesting. But um, I just find it very sad when I see these workers out there with with masks on, using this e- equipment at a time when they need to be focusing on the, on their health.
I I agree with you 100%, but I'm also looking at the economic times right now, too. So I agree with you. I'm just trying to say, I think we can give, I think we can be um, a little more lenient with that one more time. And and um, and then end it, give it, let's, let's do it that way. That's my feelings. I'm just wondering.
Can I make a comment? Johnny, if I can make a comment, alright.
Yes, please, Ryan?
There he is. Um, you know, this is a tough one, cause I feel, you know, you Suzie and Randy, I feel so in line with both of you. I don't want to be unfair and treat people unfairly. We need to do this sooner than later. Is there a way for uh, in, in, James, in our current enforcement oper, options? Is there a way to, maybe we extend a first warning opportunity for some time? Rather than say, hey, you don't have to be compliant for two months, but for a couple of months, if anybody gets caught, it's a slap on the wrist and a reminder that by this date, they have to do it? Um, I, I, and I'm looking for a middle ground. I don't necessarily support this, but I'm trying to say, I want this thing rolled out and as aggressive as possible, and I'm kind of tired of especially like our Casitas friends and other people not, not being compliant with it. But I'm very concerned that I know a number of people who talked to me about this, and it wasn't a huge issue, but I know that they may not have been able to go buy electric equipment over the last month, so.
Yeah, we could, we could, for the first 30 days, we can um, we can direct the uh, code enforcement officer to give, to give a uh, you know, first, first uh, warning, and then after 30 days, it would turn into a citation. So that, that kind of fits with, I think, what everybody's thinking under the circumstances.
Now, Suzie and Randy, does that mesh with it, it not, not being prolonging it happening? It's enforced sooner than later. It's just a lower level of enforcement so that we're, you know, making it clear, but we're, you know, I don't know.
What, why do you think that a month from now, they're gonna have the money to buy the equipment if they don't have it now? I mean, it's just postponing the inevitable, and that's why I was so concerned that we have a loner program.
Well, I agree, Suzie. The only difference is, and I, I do have an answer for that, is that a month ago or two months ago, it may have been, I agree completely. What do you mean, you don't have the money now and you will a month from now? But it happens to be that right now, there might be a lot of situations where you had the money or you wanted to do it, and now a month from now is when you can do it, just because we've landed on this very unprecedented situation.
Listen, I'm still seeing people blowing dust everywhere. You know, all they're doing is moving dust around. Why can't we just, if if we can't abide by having, if we, if we can't have a gas powered, if we can't switch to.
Okay, that, that's kind of a separate and major subject. Let's stay with the, there's gonna be dust regardless of it's gasoline or battery operated. It's a question of how we keep the dust down, so uh, let's stay kind of with the current item, which is, are we?
I would like, I would like to go back to the motion maker, and again, stick with what I've asked for, and that is that again, I, I think the most important thing that we do here is licensing. And that um, as code enforcement goes through the community and and um, interacts with these operators, that they be noticed that, one, they need a license, they have 30, 30 days to comply, and then they'll have time to get their inspection um, at the end when they have their license, and then they get 30 days after that. So Ryan, it does equate to what you're trying to do. Um, I'm just saying that we get, we really go after Suzie, and we really have to do this. We've got to get the licensing under control.
Oh, Randy, I agree. And in fact, I think we should start the licensing during the downtime. I only meant 30 days from today, I'm worried about. If it was 30 days from the end of the emergency declaration, or or, you know, just put out a little bit, because I want to see this happen yesterday. In fact, I think everybody pretty much was on enough notice to get lined up to be electric. But we did not, but the 27th was the date, and I think we all agree that for at least the last 30 days from the 20, what will be the 20, that it was kind of, nobody would have been expected to go out and buy an electric, you know, to to replace their equipment. If I had gas powered equipment, I knew there was a restriction on the 27th. It's probably this week I would have been out looking, making sure to get it compliant. And I have to be honest, like I, you couldn't even, I don't even think you could find a place, even if you wanted to, to do that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Comment on Ryan's point. Uh, Ryan, Aquaflow has financing terms for equipment. They're open, they're selling things. Greg's Rent is stocking up for rental equipment. I just bought an electric tiller online and got delivery three days after I ordered it.
So, but some of these, some of these, I mean, I agree. I mean, it's, it's, and believe me, I'm not saying that it's impossible to access one. But but if if I'm in a, if I'm in a landscaping business in the last two months, and me, and I looked at the deadline, right now, I'm not spending money on improving any of my equipment. I'm spending money on making sure I can feed my family, I can pay rent, I can maybe take care of my employees, maybe waiting for state money. I, I, I don't disagree that, I mean, there could be, there could be plenty of opportunity where people were trying to be fully compliant, and no fault of their own, they couldn't be, that's all.
Right, my understanding.
Okay, so does the motion contain what everybody's, uh, aside from the length of time? Does it contain the, the uh, features that you were looking for, Ryan and Randy?
Yeah, enforcement was the biggest thing for me.
Okay, and Bill, you're okay with that? And James?
Yes.
Okay, why don't we vote on it?
Wait, well, I, I still want to know, I, I, I'm not understanding. If they can, if they can rent the equipment from AquaFlow or Greg's Rent, why do we have to allow the uh, the gas powered equipment to continue? I'm not understanding that. We can, we can get them licensed, but I, I just.
Well, you may not want to support the motion. You're right. It, I mean, it's, it's gonna delay it a couple of weeks, but uh, I think the idea is, is now that we're getting, you know, when your mother said, this time I really mean it, you know, this is one more last time, but I, I think we're getting there.
Uh, we're getting the switch out.
Yeah.
I mean, hey, if they're willing to delay taxes, right? I mean, I'm not saying that this is not as important, but if they're willing to delay your tax return from having, being due tomorrow, it seems like it would make sense to be a little flexible. I mean, we want people to comply.
Like, we are.
Okay, and we're not talking about that much difference. I mean, we keep talking about the time element will have already passed. Well, so why don't we go ahead and just vote on it, and if you're not comfortable with this, Suzie, vote against it. Uh, uh, we, do we need a motion, or do we need a uh, roll call on this? I guess we do, because there's more, it's not gonna be by acclamation. Why don't you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
No.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Okay, we have now reached the end of the agenda. Council reports, uh, Randy, you want to start?
No, I'm good.
Okay, uh.
Well, you know what, I will, I will notify this real quick. Only because it has to do with VCTC, is that um, uh, you know, they, uh, they discussed about the funding for the ATP plan on a monthly basis and that it's going through. Um, and then tomorrow evening, I believe if James was, was gonna share with it, I'll let him, but I believe that there's the first um, uh, video or Zoom meeting regarding the ATP demonstration on Maricopa tomorrow, I think, 5 o'clock until 7 o'clock.
Okay, good, that's correct. Uh, Rand, uh, Ryan?
Um, I just want to say, uh, I, I really hate it at the end of all these meetings I'm in where everybody blows smoke up each other's rear end, but I want to say this anyway. I really do think, uh, I, I genuinely appreciate, uh, I love all of you, and I really appreciate that. We're, we're grinding through difficult decisions to try and make the best decisions we can. I know James, um, new into this gig, has, I think, been pretty unbelievable, and the staff has been pretty unbelievable about dealing with all of it. I want to give everybody much love. Bill, everyone else, I know we disagree at times. This is really tou, this is an unwritten playbook. We're all trying to write, well, on the computer in a crazy time. Um, but I will say this, I heard from someone today that said something that really uh, meant a lot. They said, you know, in Ojai, when the, when the, they felt, and I know this was something, I wasn't on the council, but they said, it all felt to a lot of people that during the Thomas Fire, there wasn't enough. Nobody feels like we're not doing enough now. Whatever lessons were learned, I think have been learned, and I know, I, I feel like I am spending 90% of my time on making sure we're really, I'm grinding hard to make good decisions for the city. Feels like that with everybody else. So I just want to say, thank you, everybody, and uh, the feedback I'm getting from the community is it's, it's being recognized, the effort that we're putting in, and I, I think it's, it's good for um, a very strange emergency. We're doing the best we can.
Ryan, thank you for the smoke. It was much, much, much deserved.
John Zerick also would be proud of me.
Okay, Suzie, what do you got?
Um, I guess, maybe James, you can give a few more details on the uh, 5:00 PM um, workshop tomorrow, the virtual, it's called the Go Ojai Demonstration Project 2020, that Randy already mentioned. Um, people know to go to the city website, right, for a link?
Yep.
Tune in.
Yeah, and I'll give some information on that. Thanks.
Okay.
Okay.
Also, on Saturday, uh, there is gonna be a virtual Earth Day. All the speakers that were gonna be, uh, that were on the program are going to be um, online.
Okay, thank you for that. That should be a savings. I think we were helping sponsor that. Uh, Bill?
Um, I think I'll just pass.
Okay, uh, and then uh, I guess let's go to the city manager.
Thank you, and and uh, those were actually the two announcements I had was Earth, virtual Earth Day scheduled for April 18th. And the um, the ATP virtual Q and A workshop is scheduled tomorrow from 5 to 7:00 PM. They're gonna be doing live renderings of the demonstration project, which to remind everybody is the uh, the proposed Maricopa Highway uh, uh, modifications. So they're gonna be doing live, live renderings. You'll be able to ask questions, get answers, and then we'll record it and uh, make it available to the public for anybody who's unable to attend tomorrow. Uh, so the links are available on our website and our Facebook page, and we'll put more information up uh, tomorrow as well.
Hey, if I hold up this painting, do you see the logo?
Suzie, where have I seen that before? That's, I've seen that before somewhere.
Well, this, describe it, because all I'm looking at is a picture of Suzie. What's the?
And we're riding our bikes um, uh, in front of the arcade, and that's the logo. It's uh, artwork is by Carmen Abalera. It's a commission painting, and it has the Topa Topa, it has the Matilla Poppies. It has some kind of uh, shoe mash symbolism. It's a real Ojai uh, bike friendly painting. Can you see? If I hold it or not, I can't see it. All peeked. Oh, yeah, you can see it. Perfect.
We, we can go on, online when uh, and look at the council meeting. It'd be the last item on the agenda. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
I, I want to give a shout out to James in terms of his communication to the, to the community, and I couldn't think of a better example. On, on last Friday, he participated with Hattie from the hospital and kind of giving us a, a dual status report to the Rotary Club on an online meeting. And I got nothing but, you know, a lot of really positive feedback. Uh, in terms of of the, the people in the community, this confident that we have, you know, good leadership and people like James and Hattie, and I, I just really wanted to give us a, a shout out to thank you for that.
Okay, and I'll add to that, that uh, I talk to James periodically on some of these things that, you know, come across his desk, and I want to compliment him, you know, I'm old and crotchety and got a real quick answer for certain things. And James always is very patient and tries to find the middle ground to make all parties as happy as they can be. And I thought his solution on the Signal Street thing was a, a great compromise, that it kept the thing open for the locals. It didn't tell the visitors they couldn't come, but if they wanted to come, they had to walk up the hill, which I think is sort of ironic, that somebody wants to go for a hike, but they don't want to go for a hike on a street to get to the trail. So it worked great. Uh, yeah, thanks, James, for that.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm just gonna say, thank you for the smoke.
You're welcome.
Mayor, I had, Mayor, I had two.
Call me anytime, Ryan, and I'll give you a little.
Mayor, I had two quick questions for James. Um, one, I drove by Sarasodi today, and it, um, I didn't think it was closed. That's how many people were there. I didn't see the parking lot closed, and so there were a lot of people inside the parking area. Um, I'm not sure what you want. In fact, I, I think I texted you when I got home, or emailed you about, is the park, did you open the park without letting us know? Um, so that's a concern that that we shut the parking lots down if they're closed. If they're open, they're open, but if they're closed, they need to be closed. And then two, I'd like to thank the chief for the response that, that I'm seeing around town, and again, the, the fact that, that he's acclimating to Ojai, um, and it seems that him and James are creating quite a team there. And I think it's uh, I think it's something that we acknowledge. And then Mayor, I'd like to just um, one time, just reiterate that we close um, in Tom Ash's memory.
No, we'll do that. Okay, we have the future agenda items. Are there gonna be any, or will the city manager just uh, deal with the crises?
Yes.
Okay, then uh, yes, as Randy says, uh, that, that's adjourn our meeting tonight, uh, in memory of a really, really fine human being that adopted Ojai, and I was, when he got his diagnosis and his health problems worsened, uh, you know, I, you could tell that he, he had a, really had a dream of becoming one of us here in the Ojai Valley. And he knew that that probably wasn't gonna happen. I'm sorry, with his passing, we lost a really good soul, so. Uh, in Tom Ash's memory, uh, the meeting is now adjourned.
John, Johnny, I didn't, I didn't know Tom, wasn't he very involved with Irvine?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and I, I just want to say, I, I. I, I heard his name a million times, but I just want to say, um, there, the, I, all of, everything I've ever been involved in water, the undoubted gold standard of how you manage water is the, is Irvine. And it is said from every agency in the state, other states and other places, and um, I, I have a overwhelming feeling that Tom may have been part of that specific legacy.
Crucial.
Okay, good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.